Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:00 on Wednesday afternoon, September 27. It is my honor to call to order the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. This is a big day. Colleagues, I always get excited on this day because it is the day that we formally discuss and take action on the proposed budget. So it's going to be a great day. We have a public hearing at 6:00. Colleagues, I think that we will be able to get through all of the business before us, sharing of ideas, and be able to take a quick break before the public hearing this evening when we come back. Before we get started, I want to go ahead and state for the record, this weekend was a difficult weekend for the city of Tallahassee family, specifically Tallahassee Police Department, as one of our officers was shot in the line of duty. I first want to acknowledge his bravery and the hard work that he and his team and all members of the police department do, keep us safe on a day-to-day basis. I want to personally thank all of the first responders that immediately responded and, quite frankly, brought him to safety, and I hope that this community will join me in keeping our officer and his family in our prayers for a full recovery. With that, I would like to ask the great Reverend Trandy Whitley, my pastor from Faith Presbyterian Church, to please come join us for the invocation. Reverend Whitley, thank you so much.
Thank you for the invitation. If you will, please join with me in prayer. Giver of life, who nurtures and sustains us, we thank you for another in day to enjoy life as a part of this community. We give thanks for the places we call home, for the city of Tallahassee, and for all those who work to make it a place of welcome, safety, and growth. As we enter this time of meeting, we lift up to you those who guide and offer direction for our city, both our elected officials and the staff that support them. Grant them wisdom and discernment, vision and passion, and a clear mind for when to speak up and when to listen. May they desire more to understand than to be understood. Make them instruments of your peace. Make the work that they do here today be the work of loving their neighbor, as we have each been loved. We pray this in the name of the Spirit of love and justice and peace, that I am blessed to know through Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for Reverend Whitley, thank you once again for joining us for the invocation this afternoon. We certainly do appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Manier, do we have any agenda modifications before us today?
No, sir.
Excellent. We have one presentation, and at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Kimball Thomas for a very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, respected other officials on the dais, and to all our public and listening audience. It is with great pleasure, I stand before you this afternoon, to talk about the great things that the Department of Housing and Community Resilience have been doing in partnerships and leveraging federal and state dollars to make sure that we are able to house as many people as possible and also preserve our communities through home repair and emergency repair as well. So I'm going to ask right now those in our housing division staff to come along and join me here at the podium, and then we'll get started with the official presentation. And don't be shy, I won't tell all your date of births. Mayor and Commissioners, I can tell you, in the last fiscal year, when we've impacted over 13,000 people in this community with our housing products and our services, over three-quarter million dollars for 34 people this past year with respect to affordable housing construction loan programs, rehab programs, emergency repair programs, that does not happen without the day-to-day rigor of the staff that you see behind me. They are truly the rock stars. They're processing the applications. They are processing the applications. They're going on site visits. They're walking on squeaky floors and looking at leaky ceilings, and they're doing all this work every single day. They're one of the most dedicated staff that any government could ever have, and I'm very proud of all of them and thank them for the work that they do, day in and day out. They are the unsung heroes of the city of Tallahassee. Give them another round of applause. I spoke of partnerships. We have partnered with the Florida Housing Coalition. You know their mantra. Their mission is to make sure that every person in every hamlet, every community in the state of Florida have an affordable house, a house that they can attain with the income that they earned. They work with us. They give us programming information, their expertise, they advocate, they guide us through our CDBG dollars, they guide us through all the funds we get from HUD, they guide us through our ARPA, they give expertise in all these areas with Land Trust and many other things, and I won't steal their representative thunder anymore. But I would like it this time, Mr. Ashawn Nesbit to come forth, the CEO of the Florida Housing Coalition, with a special presentation. Thank you, Ashawn.
Yes, he's already stolen my thunder quite a bit, but good afternoon. My name is Ashawn Nesbit. I'm the CEO of the Florida Housing Coalition, and we are so very pleased to be here today. As a Leon County resident, it's very special for me to be here today to give this award to the city of Tallahassee. So every year, we look across the state to see who's really implementing those best practices when it comes to housing affordability and really stretching those ship dollars. We know that our ship dollars have a four-to-one multiplier in our local economies, but, quite frankly, more than that, the thousands of households that are touched by the work of these people behind me, it goes without saying that we really thank them for the work that they do, and we're excited to recognize them for their innovative ways of leveraging those ship dollars to reach way more people than you would expect. $2.3 million, I believe, this year coming out of the trust funds, and imagine how far that's going to go compared to the $1 million or less than that that they've gotten in the previous years, in addition to all the rehab that they do, over 3,000 units in the pipeline, and that's just quite amazing, and it really goes without saying it's the innovative and creative and dedicated work of this team behind you, and definitely a testament to the commitment to affordable housing from you all in commission. And so we're really proud to present this year's 2023 Ship Award to the city of Tallahassee. Congratulations.
Okay, we have no other presentations before the City Commission at this time. Do we have any announcements to come before the City Commission, City Manager?
No, sir.
Any appearances by other City Commissions, appointed boards, and committees today?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda.
Move, Constan.
First and foremost, have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. The motion has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, City Commission, 10.01 Joint City-County Bicycle Working Group Appointment. I will turn it over to the Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, this item recommends Hugh Aaron to serve on the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group. If approved, he will serve a term that expires in December of 2025.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move for staff recommendation.
Second. It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 10.02, Mr. Clerk.
The Tallahassee Human Relations Committee has three seats which will expire on September 30th of 2023. Staff respectfully requests, along with the mayor's recommendation, the following reappointments to fill two of those seats. So two of the three have individuals who are eligible and interested in reappointment. Those individuals are Lilia Fernandez and Judy Mandrell.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move for reappointment.
Second. It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 10.03, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, this item recommends three appointments to the Environmental Board. Travis Diggs is recommended to serve in seat six. If approved, he'll serve a term that expires on October 31st of 2025. Richard Genere and Ashley Lacy are both recommended for reappointment to seats two and seven. Those terms will expire on October 31st of 2026.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move for reappointment and appointment.
Second. It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 10.04, Mr. Clerk.
This item addresses the Council on Cultural and Art, Council on Culture and Arts, which has a vacant city-appointed seat that will expire on September 30th of 2025. So the recommendation is for Hadley Peterson to serve out the unexpired portion of this term, and again, that term would commence immediately and expire on September 30th, 2025.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Commissioners, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Ms. Peterson, who's in the room.
Oh, great.
And we got to know each other when we were both students at FSU and the Department of Urban Planning, so I just wanted to recognize her since she's here today.
Wonderful. Thanks for joining us, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
And I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Great, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Ms. Peterson, you are here. I'll give you the opportunity. You've been confirmed. Would you like to say anything, or are you good? Wonderful. Thanks for joining us. All right, we're on item number 10.05, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. 10.05 is for appointments to the Citizens Police Review Board. The city of Tallahassee accepted applications for this board from March through April of 2023, and then again, opened it from May through July of 2023. Twenty-two applications were submitted by that deadline of July 31st, and of those submitted, 19 met the eligibility requirements. Among those 19, there were 12 applications which included letters of nomination from a community-based civic or social service organization. As you may, or as you well know, the board has at-large seats, and those seats do look for support from a community-based civic or social organization. There are also seats that are appointed individually by commissioners. So for tonight's action, there are several seats to be filled. Commissioner Matlow has an appointee, or an appointment to make, mayor, an appointment to make, and then Nia Hubbard is Commissioner Williams Cox's appointee. Her term expires in December of this year, so we could go ahead and reappoint her, as she's interested in serving again. And then there are four at-large seats which would need to come from that pool of 12 that had support from a community-based organization.
Before we get started, I'm also going to ask, Dennis, you want to go ahead and provide comment on the process? Let's go ahead during staff presentation first and foremost, and we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the benefit of individuals that are here that may not be familiar with the CPRB, Citizen Police Review Board, I want to give a little bit of background. The board is comprised of nine members. Four are from nomination from civic or social groups, and then one appointed by each of the commissioners and the mayor. Since December of last year, there have been five vacancies on this board. In that time, we've been very busy. We've reworked the policies and procedures or bylaws of the board that came before you in the August 23rd Commission meeting, where you approved those revisions to help clarify some issues that were confusing to previous board members. And on September 21st of last week, or September 21st last week, one more commissioner, one board member was removed for lack of complying with the requirements to be a board member, specifically the education and training requirements. I just want to make the board aware that we did, as the administrator went to great lengths to help that board member comply. Over that time period, we reached out 17 different times to that board member to inform them of the requirements and/or opportunities to attend training that would satisfy the requirements. So at this point, we do have six vacancies, as the Treasury Clerk alluded to, four from the civic groups, and one appointee by the mayor, and one appointee for Commissioner Treasury Clerk already covered that. So to help the prospective applicants better understand the role, responsibility, and authority of this board, so we didn't have confusion among the board members like we did previously, the city attorney, Deputy Chief Smith, and myself had two education or training sessions where we invited all of the prospective applicants to come and listen to what this board is about and what they can do, what their role or responsibility, as I said. In those sessions, we had a total of 11 attendees. Hold on, let me make sure I get that right. We had, I apologize, we had, one, two. We had seven total attendees, two of those which attended both sessions. All of the members, all of the applicants that attended those sessions seemed very receptive and appreciative of the information that we provided, and they all seemed like they would make very good board members. So in summary, what we're looking for is Commissioner Matlow and the mayor to make direct appointments to their positions, and then the board as a whole, the commission as a whole, to appoint the four civic group appointments. With that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item, Stanley Sims. For the, Mr. Sims is well aware, but for everyone else, each speaker will have three minutes for comments. I'll give you a heads-up at two and a half minutes. The green light in front of the mayor and pro tem will also turn yellow at 30 seconds, and then red.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm Stanley Sims, and my wife still allows me to reside at 1320 Avondale Way. I am encouraged by the auditor's remarks, because that's exactly what I was going to say, that members of this committee need to have a clear understanding of their role. And I also want to add, I like you guys' approach in making sure that they have a clear understanding, but Commissioner Matlow, I think that same educational session is needed in the community as well. I'm still not convinced that our community have a good understanding of what this board does and what its limitations. When I go to these meetings, I hear citizens putting the expectation of this board to do more than what they really have the power to do. And then there's other, there's another point that I also would like to, oh, my tongue is going to hurt, differentiate, make a difference between, is, you also have a citizen board, and may I know, but there needs to be a clear difference of what those two roles are as well. So I'm glad to see that we are getting this back on track, and we're not only getting it back on track with a educational component, but I don't, that component that allows citizens to vent and air their concerns, it's not operational. And I'm going to say it, it's not operational, and has not been operational in a long time. And so we need to look at the leadership of that not game, poor of a last choice of words, but we need to look at the leadership of that as well, and to get those people engaged. And finally, as a father, a proud father of a public servant, first responder, last week, my son did his first job as a fireman, and I'm awfully proud of that. And, Mr. Mayor, you are right. When I got news that a police officer had been shot, it hits different. That's somebody's husband, that's somebody's child, somebody's uncle, somebody's friend. And I thank every law enforcement and first responder that put their life on the line every day, so that I have this privilege for these three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the only speaker on this item.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. We'll hit option number one first, option number two, and then option number three, Mayor Pro Tem. For option four and option five, we will just take motions, and we'll go from there. So option number one, Commissioner Matlow, your appointment for seat three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard from a couple people in the last few days who are also interested in serving, so I'm going to defer and wait until October 11th to make my appointment.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow is going to defer. Option two is me. I would like to appoint Mr. Christian Minor to seat four.
Second. We don't have to second.
Option three, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I would like to reappoint Ms. Nia Hubbard.
Excellent. Okay, now we're on option four, to appoint members to the at-large seat six, term commencing on September 27th and expiring on December 31st, 2026.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'd like to nominate Darlene Cordero and Justin Ravello.
All right, hold on, we're doing one at-large for seat six.
Okay, okay.
And then we'll go seat by seat.
Well, I nominate Darlene Cordero.
All right, there's a motion for Darlene Cordero.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, now option five, we will be appointing for at-large seats seven, eight, and nine, terms commencing on September 27th of this year, expiring on December 31st, 2025. Mayor Pro Tem?
I would like to nominate Justin Ravello.
Second.
Hope I'm saying that correctly. Brandon Scheck, because we're doing three, right?
One at a time.
Are we going to do one at a time?
We can do one at a time.
Okay, well, Justin would be my nominee.
Okay, the name one more time for the record.
Justin Ravello.
Okay, Justin Ravello's name has been put in a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if it's the next item or this one, but I'd also like to nominate.
But we're going to take a vote, and we're going to go seat by seat by seat.
Okay.
I got Commissioner Porter next, and then I'll recognize you. Okay? All right, so on the motion on the table for this one individual, this would be for seat seven.
And which individual was it again?
Justin Ravello.
Oh, yes.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, we are on seat eight, and I saw Commissioner Porter's hand. Commissioner Porter, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Debbie Barrett Hayes.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, motion and second and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. And then Commissioner Matlow, you had your hand up for seat nine.
I'll defer to the board. He actually took my recommendation, so I have to look at the list again.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mayor Frank Roycraft.
Wonderful. There's a motion on the table for Mr. Frank Roycraft. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We have filled the appointments for the Police Review Board. We will come back at a future date when Commissioner Matlow is ready to appoint his nominee, but we have a quorum now, correct? Excellent. Any other item, any other business on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Great, we are on introduction of ordinance, 11.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-35, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability and conflicts in an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-35, set the first and only public hearing for October 25th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir, no comments.
Okay, the recommended action is simply to read into the record the introduction of the ordinance. Is there a motion for option one?
So move.
Second. Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-36, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-36, set the first and only public hearing for October 25th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. The recommended action is simply to read the introduction of the ordinance into the record. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on policy formation and direction, item 12.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to accept a grant of $124,590 from the Florida Department of Emergency Management, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This supports studies to enhance wind protection and backup generation at the future Fire Station 17, and affords us a good opportunity to check in on that fire station. The timing of the grant is well-timed, as the needs assessment and conceptual design and preliminary site planning for the fire station have been completed, and the team is moving into the final design phase. I would like to ask Dr. Kimball Thomas to provide us some information about the grant itself, and then Director Powell to give us an update on the fire station itself, on the project.
Excellent. Dr. Thomas?
Mayor, Commissioners, again, my pleasure. Thank you, City Manager Goode. With respect to this particular grant, the Department of Emergency Management, my next slide put out a NOFA with respect to managing Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We made a strong application. I have staff. I have staff with me in resiliency and sustainability that made sure that happened. We were awarded the grant and it's supposed to look at a feasibility study with respect to, um, increased wind resistance and backup power generation for already proposed fire station, phase one. We have been already allotted 124,000 plus for the design and study. The application was so strong that our staff put together that we will be in the running to get additional dollars for phase two funding when the time comes, and we'll probably just have to do a basic cost analysis for that. So we're very proud to what we're able to do. We worked across other, uh, departments to do this, collaborated with them, and, uh, making sure that we continue the resiliency and sustainability for our community. And the next slide, um, Director of Construction, John Powell, will guide you through the next part of the presentation.
Powell, good to see you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Uh, this is the general location of the new Fire Station 17, uh, project, which is on the former Lake Bradford Road wastewater treatment plant property, which borders Lake Bradford Road and Amu Way. You can see it highlighted in color there. The, um, situation of the new fire station will allow ingress and egress in three different manners, one off of Levy Avenue, one off of Kissimmee Street, and one off of Lake Bradford Road. And as the, uh, City Manager indicated, we have worked closely with Chief Sanders on the spatial needs assessment to determine how much space they need and what kind of space they need. We've taken that, we've translated that into a conceptual design, as well as a preliminary site layout, as we saw on the previous slide. And these funds that Dr. Thomas briefly described will help us finalize that design at the end of this year or early next year, where we will then move into preparing the necessary construction documents, competitively bidding out construction work, with construction beginning in, or around June of 2024 and substantial completion and occupancy, spring or summer of 2025.
Excellent. Thank you. City Manager, final comments?
No, sir. I think they did a great job. Thank you.
This is exciting. Mr. Clerk, any public comment on this item?
No speakers on the item.
All right. Colleagues, Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you recognizing me to make this motion because when I first came to the commission, we were considering the fire services fee. This was 2014, 2015, somewhere around that time period. And what I noticed in the report was that the area that would be served by this fire station, uh, had the most calls for services, uh, and the longest response time. And it occurred to me then that we had to do something different in that area. A lot of the homes in that area, which is the south side Providence neighborhood area primarily, um, are wood frame homes, and they go up like in a fire, uh, in no time. And so I began to advocate for this fire station and am happy to see, uh, that by, uh, tw- summer of 2025, uh, we will have another fire station, uh, in that area to serve our residents in that area. So with that, I'd like to move that we accept staff recommendation, uh, on this item, Mr. Mayor.
And I'd second that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation to accept the grant funding of 124,590, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to pile on about how great this is gonna be. Um, I've gotten a few questions about making sure that this was still gonna happen, so I wanted to make sure everyone understands that the fire station number 17 is, we could easily put in Perrin, Lake Bradford Road, so folks will know that that, this is where it's gonna be, and that it's gonna be fantastic. We've made some agreements to make sure that it's, it's gonna be LEED certified, and that there will be a resiliency hub and community space in there for community service. And, um, I know that the fire station, I don't remember which number, the one on South Monroe, could use the help, because by the time they get from where they are to the fire, you know, it's, 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 it's probably a little bit too late. So we're glad, uh, Chief Sanders and crew that, um, gonna get some help. Help is on the way. We'll let everybody in that area know, help is on the way. So thank you. And, and we're getting money. People recognize the need to do this, and this is how we work our budgets. We, we don't pay for everything that we, we, we provide in service. We go and find money to leverage to help us deliver those things that we need to in our community. So thank you, Dr. Thomas, and you and your team, and, uh, Mr. Powell, and all, all that you all are doing to make these things come to fruition. Sometimes it may seem like it take a long time, but progress is not handled, it's not, it doesn't come overnight to do it right. It takes a little time, and so thank you all for making sure that it's gonna be delivered, hopefully in my lifetime, at 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing none. Motion's been made for staff recommendation on option number one by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Five zero. Item number 12.02, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your last meeting, you directed staff to bring back information about property that the Electric and Gas Utility bought in 2006, and, uh, Walani was known as Walani. Uh, in, in, in particular, you were inquiring about the green space of that property and the housing that, that could be included there. And it's approximately 430 acres is the size of land, so we, we went back and, and did some research. In fact, there's, there's good history on this property. And about 10 years ago, in 2013, the City Commission took action to put in place a PUD, which sets the framework, as you know, sets the framework. It's not at a, a granular detail, but it's a really good framework to establish what can occur, what kind of development can occur on that property. And, and I think, very consistent with your conversation at your last meeting, what we discovered as we kind of dusted this off, it's been a little time since we've looked at it, and there's been quite a bit of green space reserved, in fact, 44% of the property is reserved for green space, and about a third for housing, uh, some of which would be contemplated to be affordable housing. So what we discovered was it's in really good shape as it relates to future development and consistent with the discussion you've had. Uh, Artie White, our, our Director of Place, is, uh, gonna give a little more detailed presentation. We've got some maps, and I think you'll be very pleased to, uh, to see the condition of the property already.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, um, just as the City Manager noted, uh, at the last meeting, you requested information about the city utility-owned portion of Walani, uh, and specifically kind of looking at the, the open space and green space of that area. Uh, this brief presentation will kind of go over the development plan for the, the city utility-owned portion, we call it the, the toe east, uh, as well as how that fits into the larger, uh, Walani Critical Area Plan, specifically looking at the open space and green space. The great news is that you already have a PUD that aligns very well with what was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, this PUD balances the priorities of preserving open space with the other priorities of, uh, looking at housing stock that's currently needed, as well as the, the projected need for housing. It sets aside 190 acres of open space, as you can see on the map. Uh, that's 44% of the overall toe east area. Uh, just for note, that is more than double, uh, similarly sized PUDs elsewhere in the community. So if we look at Piney Z, which is roughly the same size as this, uh, they set aside 17%. Uh, Bull Run sets aside 19%. Uh, and again, the, the toe east PUD sets aside 44% of the acreage of that area. Uh, this is also more than the other parts of Walani. Uh, so the, the canopy area, uh, PUD and the heel PUD both set aside roughly 30% between 29 and 31%. Uh, and the arch, the master plan that was approved a few years ago, uh, requires 40%. And here we are at the toe east with 44%. The planning for the Walani Critical Area Plan, which includes the toe east, began back in 1990, when the comprehensive plan, uh, identified this as a priority critical planning area. Uh, since then, significant amounts of planning have gone into the development of, uh, first master plans, and then, uh, for most of the, the Walani property, uh, additional plan unit developments. The purpose of this coordinated and cohesive planning effort was to ensure that we do balance things. We imbalance, uh, open space, we balance housing, we balance the need for jobs and, uh, employment centers and opportunities for that. Uh, it also makes sure that we look at other important things, uh, when we plan large areas. And we want to make sure that there's housing near jobs, so that people aren't driving as far to get to the jobs. Uh, ensures that there's a connected network of bicycle facilities, sidewalks, and trails, uh, so that no one has to rely on a car, uh, to get to those jobs and to get to their housing and to have access to that open space. Uh, and, really significantly, uh, it ensures that that open space is a connected network of open space. One of the things that we really wanted to avoid, especially when we plan large areas like this, or having fragmented open space, we want to make sure that these things are coordinated across the different areas, so that overall we have a system of, of open When we look at the open space in the overall critical area plan, uh, again, 190 acres in the, the city utility-owned portion, uh, but when we add the overall open space of the toe, the heel, and the arch together, we get over 2,517 acres of open space. Uh, when we look at that in conjunction with the existing, uh, McKissicki Canopy Road Greenway, which was part of the Walani Critical Plan area, that's over 3,000 acres of open space just inside the Walani Critical Area Plan. Uh, and very key to that is there are policies in place to ensure that we protect the most significant environmental features first, and then we have policies in place that, again, ensure that this open space is coordinated and connected and continuous. When we zoom out a little bit and look at everything within three miles of the Walani Critical Area Plan, and we chose three miles because the McKissicki, uh, Canopy Road Greenway specifically, uh, management plan specifically calls for looking at a three-mile radius away from that, uh, there's an additional 3,373 acres of open space. So in addition to the over 3,000 acres inside Walani, and within three miles, there's an additional over 3,000 acres of open space, uh, in that area. Uh, your strategic plan, Commissioners, calls for 100 parks by 2024, and has a target of 100% of city residents within a 10-minute walking distance of a park or open space. Uh, the green space that currently exists ensures that today, all people in, uh, who live in this area are within that 10-minute walk of an open space, and the planned open space will ensure that that target is continually met as development occurs and more people live in this area. Uh, and again, Commissioners, a lot of very intentional and deliberate planning have gone into, uh, not only the toe east PUD, uh, but the overall critical area plan to make sure this is, uh, well coordinated and, uh, that does balance the need for preserving open space, having housing supply and housing stock, and providing jobs. Uh, the PUD already adopted has at least 190 acres of open space just within the toe east, uh, and that coordinates well with the over 3,000 acres of open space in the overall canopy, uh, um, Critical Area Plan for Walani. With that, uh, the recommended action is action one.
Excellent. Okay. First of all, any questions for Mr. White? All right. Mr. Cook, public comment on this item?
We have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. So, of the open space, how much of that, are there, is there stormwater ponds? Like, is there anything else other than green space that's included in the open space?
Uh, in the 190 acres, uh, 51 of that would be, uh, stormwater facilities. Uh, everything else is that, um, conservation land, preservation land, uh, and other open, uh, open space, green space, but not stormwater facilities.
Okay. And, like, if we do nothing, what are the next steps? We're waiting for someone, you know, someone to approach us, a developer at some point?
Um, actually, it's a city utility-owned property, so I'll, I'll defer to...
Right. Because it just in the, in the item, right, the idea was that at some point we expected this to be privately developed. Is that correct?
At some point, it was planned to be developed.
Yeah.
And in an intentional way. But right now, the, the property doesn't even have, uh, legal access person.
Right.
Because we, you gotta have the roadway network to serve it. And as you're aware, the, the Walani Gateway Project will begin to start connecting that area, uh, but then you've got to make the connection all the way up to Bannerman before you can really start getting that connectivity that's required for the comp plan approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, do we have any public com... Commissioner Matt Low?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Matt...
If there's public comment, I'll take that first. It's not, there's not.
No, sir. No comment.
Commissioner Malo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I'm not sure if this is a question for Wayne. Can, can we walk through the history of, um, so the gas utility purchase, the, the acreage? Do, do we have the cost of what was paid for it?
Mr. Mayor, I can...
Sure.
It was, it was, at the time, it was the electric utility.
Okay.
It's now the electric and gas utility, but it's owned by that enterprise. It was bought in 2006. Uh, the total cost of investment in efforts to date are in the neighborhood of 12 to 13 million dollars.
Okay. And we, do we have any recent appraisals of the value of the land?
No.
Okay. So, the utility purchased it for a, a transmission line, and then who, who brought forward a, a PUD proposal?
The City Commission.
The City Commission did?
Yes.
So they were planning the electric utilities, use of future property from the electric utility, is that? Okay.
I, I guess you could say that, Mr. Mayor.
This was the previous commission, correct?
It was the commission in place. The action was taken in 2013. Um, as Mr. Tetter indicated, it was expected that land would be sold at some point when it was ready for development. The City Commission found it wise to put a PUD in place to make sure that it could control, to some degree, how ultimately that development would occur.
Okay. Um, so currently, as it stands, the utility still, if this were to be this sold, the money would have to go back to the utility or to recoup.
Mr. Mayor, um, according to your policy, the money, it's an enterprise fund, and so it has to go back to the utility. Um, and the utility recoup its, um, investment and costs that it's incurred. So somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 13 million dollars. It's very safe to say that this land is worth much more than that. The action that you've taken on other lands you've sold recently is any residual could then flow, uh, dependent upon your fund balances, could flow to a fund outside of the enterprise fund.
Okay. So to legally compensate the utility back, the 12 million dollars would be the minimum, what they paid for it would be the minimum that we'd have to pay back?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Yes, it would.
Okay. Um, thank you. I, I'm glad we're, we're having this conversation. Just looking at the PUD and the amount of, 400 acres is a tremendous amount of property and has a tremendous, um, amount of value. And, and I think we, um, started the conversation at our last meeting, but really need to, um, figure out how we're going to maximize, um, affordable housing in our city. And I'm not saying we should go build all affordable housing on 400 acres, but how do we leverage the value of 400 acres, which is worth a multiple of what we paid for it, um, now going forward? And I think looking at the, the PUD, um, if we were to sell it outright, there's somewhere between 200 and 300 inclusionary units. And I think if we have ownership of it already and all we receive is less than one inclusionary unit per acre, I don't think we've really done a service, um, to the taxpayers, to the people of Tallahassee, really, um, met our mission. And, and it's not a, uh, an action that needs to be taken today, but what, what I would propose is, there's an ongoing conversation, um, at Blueprint right now, of how we can use, um, sales tax dollars for land acquisition. So if we could find the funding to make the utility whole, 12 to 13 million dollars through Blueprint, that opens up a wide range of possibilities, um, for what we can do with the land. We don't have to have a private buyer, um, right offhand to expedite the process, because people find out there's land for sale, all of a sudden we get unsolicited offers, and things can spiral out of control. But I think if we take a step back and intentionally, um, work together to plan how we can maximize affordable housing, either by portions of sales or, or swaps, not to concentrate low-income housing on 400 acres, but to maximize how many units we develop, um, in the next few years with this property. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. I am encouraged, and let me remind the commission that there is already elements of both affordable and workforce housing and inclusionary housing in the putt. And of course, as we move forward in this process, we will have the opportunity to continuously revisit. Commissioner Malo, I'm extremely hesitant. I'll just tell you my gut reaction of selling this land to Blueprint. There is nothing that you mentioned, which I do agree that we have to have a strong concentration on workforce and affordable housing, but there was nothing that would prevent the Blueprint Agency from moving forward even with us in ownership of the land. So it's going to take a strong argument to convince me to support selling the land to Blueprint, but for the action of today, I'm going to support the item before us. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 12.03. I'm going to first turn it over to the City Manager for opening comments, and then Mayor Pro Tem, so looking forward to your update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be really brief. Commissioner Williams-Cox has done the lion's share of work on this. This is a continuation of discussion about the Pensacola Street Corridor and items related to that in terms of investment, crime, homelessness, and a collection of efforts by local government and others in order to try to tackle some of these issues. There was a meeting last week, Tuesday, I believe, last week, as committed at your last City Commission meeting with a collection of folks that was led by Commissioner Williams-Cox, and she's graciously agreed to provide an update on that matter, and so I'll pass it to her.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm correct that this is just an update. You're not, I mean, if anything, we'd make a motion to accept your update, but I personally appreciate you taking the leadership on this item and look forward to hearing what you have to say. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. And I want to thank all the participants in this meeting on last week, and I especially want to thank Dr. Tawanda Davis for working with all the entities to get it scheduled. And we met at this village at, as the guest of the Sheriff, Leon County Sheriff's Office. So we want to thank the Sheriff's Office, we want to thank the county, and we want to thank Tallahassee Police Department, as well as the chambers were invited. Tallahassee Chamber did a 10. I want to thank everyone who participated. So today, what I would, what I'm going to do is to provide you with a, we had a great conversation for two hours. I also want to thank County Commissioner Christian Caban because he attended the meeting and participated as well. So let me just share with you what, what were some of the results that came out of it. It sounded like what really was happening was that there was work going on, but it had not been, everyone was not aware of what was going on, which is, you know, typical, we're all trying to solve issues, but we must continue to work more collaboratively. So on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff provided, they are collaborating with their law enforcement partners in regards to any concerns dealing with the West Pensacola Street area. They're working with key area stakeholders to address any concerns and or fears that they may have. They're providing some directed patrol activity based on information available. As you know, the Leon County Sheriff's Office is really right off of Pensacola Street. They are, they're going to present a more proactive posture to address non-law enforcement concerns for the area, such as, you know, all the activity that's occurring over there is not criminal. Some of it is residents, folks on Pensacola Street needing assistance. Some of it is medical, some of it may be otherwise. And they're also saying that they're collaborating with community partners as needed. The Tallahassee Police Department shared that, that we will continue to, TPD and Park staff are taking actions to address issues related to camps in specific areas. As you know, we've been dealing with that for a while. They've provided extra patrols in the areas and are responding to calls for assistance as needed. Additionally, they've initiated a closure of camps in various locations, including Pensacola, Tennessee, Apple Yard, Stadium Drive, and Jackson Bluff, and they plan to continue monitoring the area to prevent the establishment of new camps. In the context of the budget, the TPD anticipates receiving funding for 20 additional officer positions, as well as resources for technology, software, and cameras to enhance monitoring capabilities in the area. These resources are expected to enable a quicker response to crimes because that was one of the concerns, that response time was not, not very good. TPD also continues to, its efforts to improve safety and security in these areas and is set to receive additional resources to support these efforts once the new budget is approved. Leon County was represented by Assistant County Administrator and someone who's working in the housing area, and what they shared was, on behalf of the Kearney Center, the county awarded the Kearney Center nearly $500,000 of Opera Consistency Funds to enhance their day services, to implement a shuttle service to bring unhoused neighbors from North Monroe and downtown to the shelter to access services, and increase security and trash cleanup on Pensacola through a Good Neighbors Program. The Kearney Center is also currently ramping up, hiring, solidifying their shuttle schedule, and working to acquire a golf cart to implement the contract deliverables. It is a 13-month grant with payment each month. The county, city, Big Bang Contingent of Care, and the Children's Services Council work together to review the grant proposals for the consistency fund in the summer. The Kearney Center will focus their efforts between Apple Yard to Ocala once they have the golf cart up and running. As far as street outreach that, all of this was provided to us by Leon County, the street outreach would include host deputies, and I forgot what H-O-S-T stood for, but that's what they think.
Homeless Outreach Services.
Okay. There we go. And those deputies and service providers and a city staff member, we all know who that is, that city, that city staff member from Beautification worked together on street outreach efforts, and they're working to develop a by-name list of the individuals sleeping in or hanging out on Pensacola Street Corridor to identify needs and to connect individuals to appropriate services. So there's a lot of activity that's taking place, and I really like the collaborative effort that we're all working together to try to solve this issue. And the sheriff was very clear that it's going to cost something. If they're having to reallocate or move people around, that means that they'll have fewer officers in certain areas of town. So it's going to require that we all understand that it's going to either cost us some services or cost some money to be able to make these things happen. But I'm very encouraged by what I learned there at that meeting, and also in attendance was Steve Leoni and some of his staff from the shopping center nearby. And I think they too were very encouraged and very happy to hear about things that were actually going on that they were not aware of, that was either, has already started, was or in the process of getting started come October 1. So that is the update that I provide based on the meeting that we had last week, and I'll take any questions if there are any. Okay. So Commissioner Porter first.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could you forward that, your notes?
Absolutely.
To us? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Mayor Pro Tem. I want to commend you for the leadership that you have taken on this issue. I have, I can't tell you how long it's been that I've been getting calls from Mr. Leoni and other business owners in that or along that West Pensacola Street Corridor discussing the issue of homelessness and the disruption that that has caused, especially among businesses and residences among that corridor, the neighborhoods that interface that corridor. Businesses, their profits have been disrupted. The, the student housing, they have seen a drop in the number of their housing units that are being leased out or rented out. And so it's had a tremendously negative impact on that corridor, and I'm glad to see that they know that there have been things that are happening to address some of those issues, but we've got a coordinated effort now to make that happen. It got to the point where it was so bad that the federal government decided to move all of the federal employees out of Mr. Leoni's Shopping Plaza, the military recruiters, they have all been moved out. Fortunately, the post office is still in there, but that's the point that it had gotten. People were moving out of their homes, and so I'm glad to hear that we're making progress. I want to thank Stephen for his persistence, and he has been very persistent in bringing attention to this issue, and so I'm glad to hear that we are moving forward and progress will be made and improvements made along that corridor. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
I failed to mention that there was also representative there from Florida State University Police Department as well.
Excellent. Before we go any further, I think we have two public speakers on this item. So Mr. Clerk?
That's correct, Mayor. The first is Stanley Sims. Stanley Sims on this item, and then Bernard Stevens.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm still Stanley Sims, but I want to wear a different hat. I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit called Help, Helping Entrepreneurs Leverage Prosperity. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'm very excited to hear about this meeting. I'm disappointed that I did not attend, and I do seek permission, guidance, or authority to attend the next meeting if there is one. Reason why I'm speaking upon this area is a lot that has been left out of the door is our small, small businesses in that corridor who do not have the resources like Steve Leoni that are suffering. And it's just not that corridor, Pensacola corridor. Matter of fact, I live right on that, in the apartment complex of the wall they sit on. That's where I met my wife. Is she watching? And I'm also very encouraged, Mayor, that this problem wasn't designed or described like total crime activity, because that's not what it is. It's really more homelessness, mental health. That area is really concentrated because of the shelters that live there, and we understand that. And also, I want to thank the Leon County Sheriff's Department, as well as TPD, because I've got to know the outreach who are dealing with these camps. These camps are not just on the South Side. These camps over where I live, there's a camp right there across from Publix on Centevia Road that TPD, at first, I was a little upset with how they handled it, but we've moved to a more sensitive manner in dealing with those people that go in the woods and live. There's another camp right there on Park Avenue and Blairstone Road. This is a problem in not just our community, but all across America. But I'm so thankful that we are handling this problem with sensitivity. And if, Mayor Pro Tem, since you have been the lead on this area...
30 seconds.
What are we going to do to help those small, small businesses that have been impacted? Like those small businesses that have endured with this type of problem all their life on Bovard Street? They've operated their business like that all way. Is that the norm for Bovard Street? If it's not the norm for Bovard, for Pensacola Street, it should not be the norm for Bovard Street or...
You're at 3 minutes.
...as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk?
Bernard Stevens.
Name and address for the record, please. 3 minutes.
My name is Bernard Stevens, and my address is exempt. Ladies and gentlemen, I am ashamed that it took stakeholders who put money into the city to come here and ask for change in one specific area, and you neglect the rest. You talk about the Kearney Center when they are already full to capacity, and then you over-police the people with police officers, and you want funding for police officers to patrol the homeless. When are you going to do something about that? How much longer do the city have to cry for help? You spend money where you want to spend it, and you forget about the human factor. You don't send psychologists out there. You don't send psychiatrists out there. You send people with guns, people that are already struggling, who have lost everything, and the best you could do is send the police? How dare you? Where is the humanity in that? And for you all to sit up here and think that's okay? Brother Richardson, I'm discouraged. Sister Cox, I'm discouraged. Matt Daley, I'm discouraged because you three think everything is about the police. You don't help your community, you hurt them, and I'm tired of hurting myself because everybody is getting hurt around here. But the people who you want to sow into your campaign, them are the ones you pacify. But how much longer? How much longer does the city have to go through this? Camps here, camps there. You got so much money, you can't even put housing for the homeless. You can't even put money in mental health. What you have to all that city to want funding for more police? If you all don't look yourself in the mirror and understand that mental health is an issue in America, and it's not the incarceration of an individual, it's the mental health. How about you try losing what you have and don't have nowhere to turn? You don't know how it feels to be on the street. You don't know how it feels to not have any money. I am discouraged at each and every last one of you elected officials, every last one of you, because you should have had a better plan in place to help the individuals in this city, the homeless, huh? You're proud on the poor. They talk about this in the Bible, too, and you call yourself Christians. You do not persecute sin with the law. You send help, and if you cannot send help to the people that's hurting in your cities that's staying in your woods and that's on the side of the street, then maybe you need to look yourself in the mirror once again and say, how am I benefiting or changing my community? Just because you give food, just because you set up camps somewhere and make people feel like they have something, what about the person?
You're at 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Thank you. You all need to come up with a better plan, and I'm going to hold each and every last one of you accountable. I promise you that, because the city has had enough of this foolishness. You get together, you get more police. You don't use the police for your personal interests to proud on the poor. I'm telling you, we didn't have enough of this. I digress my time.
Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk?
No other speakers on the item.
Excellent. Okay. So, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I too want to say thank you for your leadership and for all that you're doing. I do know that from the law enforcement perspective, both the City of Tallahassee's team unit and the Sheriff's Mental Health Unit is heavily involved, and I am very proud of our team unit. That is the mental health unit that we do send out on the calls when there is a mental health issue. We use the team unit, which is a licensed professional mental health advocate. That is the primary, along with physical health as well, to take care of these individuals. So thank you for including them in these discussions as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. So there's no action needed on this particular item. Do we have any other items coming before steering policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Okay. So let's go ahead, and Mr. Clerk, if we, I'm not going to make anybody wait till 6:00 after the budget public hearing if they want to speak on unengaged items. Let's go ahead and allow anybody that's here on unengaged items to speak, and then colleagues, we'll go through, excuse me, then we'll go through the sharing of ideas, and then we can take a break.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several unengaged speakers here this evening. The first is Harry Brown, followed by Bernard Stevens. So Mr. Brown is our first speaker at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Harry Brown, reside at 5431 Crump Road. I'm here to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. At the last commission meeting, I told you that when Scott Maddox read from a three-page document of lies about me, that he was wearing a gun under his blazer. Now I ask you, Daley, are you all allowed to bring guns on the dais, and are you all required to go through the metal detector? Are you?
I don't know if we are required, but I do go through the metal detector, and I don't think anyone is carrying up here, but if you are and you would like to respond, you're more than welcome to.
I do believe if I had approached the dais when Scott Maddox was reading from the document, I would have been a dead black man. Now, a couple meetings ago, you, Daley, marched gleefully and arrogant across the platform stating that you agreed with your city attorney that I did not deserve severance pay. This is a severance pay policy. Severance pay will not be provided to those employees who leave city employment solely on their own volition, to those employees terminated for misfeasance or malfeasance or dereliction of duty. I was not terminated for either of these, yet the city put a lie in my personnel file stating that I resigned from the city when I was followed out of City Hall with a plainclothes police officer with a gun in his fanny pack. That is not fair, and I don't want to... That is not fair, and I don't want to see any other city employee to have to go through that. It's totally unfair. Now, Mr. Cook, I remember some years ago, you read from a vile and defaming document regarding me that someone else provided for you, and you had the audacity to read it, read from one of your cohorts who was of the same character as you, while you knew nothing negative about me. Now, Daley, your ally, Curtis Richardson, used profanity from the dais when you were letting him get away with it, until Reverend Stevens from the audience called you out on it. Yet you called me out when you thought I had said some off-color. I do not speak that way.
You're at about thirty seconds.
I do not talk. How many seconds?
Thirty.
Okay. I do not talk that way. I will rebuke those who sin in the presence of all, so that others may fear. That's according to First Timothy 5:20. Anita did me so dirty for Scott Maddox, but look at her now. She can't keep her son out of jail after giving him a $60,000 a year job. I worked so hard trying to make her look good over the years at City Hall.
You're at three minutes.
And have many accolades to show for it.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much.
Okay. My warning to you all, every one of you, treat others as you wish to be treated.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
And you always try to run Harry Brown.
Bernard Stevens.
You always try to run Harry Brown from this podium.
Well, we give everybody the same amount of time, three minutes. Our next speaker, please.
Bernard Stevens, followed by Dot Inman Johnson.
Excellent. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. My address is exempt. My brothers and my sisters, it's me again, your humble servant. Here's just to do the will of the Lord. Then I said, I will not make mention of him, nor speak anymore in his name, but his word was in my heart, like a burning fire shut up in my bones. I was weary of holding it back, and I could not. Jeremiah 20, verse nine. It's true when they do it, but it's a problem when I do it. When you put in the fire, you don't come out the same. When a fire touches something, it's not the same. How much more does this city have to be on fire? Reese Gold, wake up and understand that enough is enough. Until Mayor John Daley, wake up and understand enough is enough. Until Sister Cox, wake up and understand enough is enough. To Brother Richardson, wake up and understand enough is enough. You all cannot continue to lead this government like this. I'm not going to let you, and I'm telling you that to your face right here today. You can do whatever you want to do with me, because I done had peace with the Lord. But one thing I am telling you is when Jeremiah says, it's like fire shot up in my bones, you don't know what fire does. Fire gives light, and without light, we have nothing. Without light, we have nothing. This city ain't giving no light to nobody but the rich. All y'all doing is getting, making the rich richer and the poor poor. You talk about raises, you talk about bonuses, but yet instead, the people inside your city still hurt today. You had a city charter meeting earlier today, and you know what happened with that? Nothing. Y'all ain't want to do nothing about it. You all keep suppressing the speech of the people, and I done had enough. And you know what I know? You call things are as they are. I don't sit around here and bite my tongue, and I ain't going to do it. You going to put some respect on my name, and that's one thing I know for sure. I asked for a meeting with you, you and you, and neither one of you responded to my email. You think it's a game? Nah, it ain't. Reese Gold, you, man, come on, dude. Your city still hurting, your employees hurting. You started firing them. What's up with that? You all don't even treat the people right. You all cheering the God, and then you treat us like we nobody, like we peasants, like we your servants. People come up here begging for change, and you identify what you want to identify. Nah, man, this ain't happening in Tallahassee no more. You can put your hand on your head, you can take as many breaths as you want, but I'm telling you one thing for sure, the citizens are going to be heard, regardless if you like it or not. Brother Matt Low and Sister Porter, I appreciate your leadership, because you stand up the evil.
You have fifteen seconds.
Thank you for my fifteen seconds. I'm sick of this, and y'all better figure something out, because if you don't, I promise to God that the people, when they come up for election, neither one of y'all will be in that seat that you're sitting in now. And I'm going to make that clear once again. You are elected. You ain't hired, you elected.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dot Inman Johnson, and then Ron Saff.
Good afternoon. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, Tallahassee. I can't be here for the six o'clock meeting, so I'm happy, Mr. Mayor, that you allowed us to speak at this time. And since the tax, the mileage rate increase, has already received three majority votes. I don't expect to change any minds, but I'm going to speak my piece anyway. First of all, I'm not against taxes. I have voted for the sales tax, the tourist tax, and several taxes several times, but it was for very necessary needs in this community. This was an unnecessary increase of the property tax, because there were several steps that could have been taken to avoid it. First, require each department to tighten the belt on all except absolutely necessary expenditures. Number two, you could have phased in the TPD new expenses from the contract over two years and held off on some of those purchases outside of the positions that were requested. And number three, you could have done a one-time emergency waiver to your restrictions on the transfer from the utility reserve. You make the policy, you have the ability to change the policy. When I brought forward the rate stabilization program that, years ago, that was approved by the then commission, it was for just situations like this one, to lower the financial burden on people who cannot afford these kind of financial situations, the poor, the folks who need help.
You're at thirty seconds.
And I wish you had taken those options. You didn't. It's too late now. This is the last hearing before the rates go into effect, but I am opposed to this increase, because it could have been eliminated or lowered by doing the things I just suggested. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, our next speaker is Stanley Sims. Dr. Saff, I understood you wanted a moment. So, Stanley Sims, come right on in. Apologize for the confusion there, but Stanley Sims is next.
Mr. Mayor, this won't even take three minutes. I'm glad that you took unengaged speakers first, I won't have to wait to six. I just wanted to bring back to the public's attention about the engagement of the charter review. I just think that is very important. The city attorney earlier today did a very good job in what I told her ninth, 10th grade, user-friendly language, to help us to really understand what this process is, and then what to expect out of a charter review. Because I had a lot of false expectations, think that I'll be able to change this and change that, but she clearly educated me to the fact of what's in a charter and what's a ordinance. And so, as we continue to go through this process, I really think that, so that when we come to the other end, we do not lose the education component, because it was like maybe 20 people here, but as this thing pick up steam and we start making recommendations, because I've had, Mayor, people to call and ask me, was, does that mean that in this charter, that we would consolidate law enforcement? There's a lot of little questions to that, and so, I just wanted to bring that issue back up, because I'm really looking to inspire, or to lead, or to get you guys to consider some changes to our charter, some changes to the authority of what the ethic boards have, some changes to the authority of what the police board have. I'm even interested to gather in some information if, from moving this commission from a five to a seven, and will that kill the representation or diversity on this board? I'm wanting to know what the issues with a strong mayor, and with a strong mayor, how many commissioners he have? I'm interested in hearing all these things. I don't, and I've made a decision not to come with preconceived answers or conclusions. I'm open.
You're at thirty seconds.
Why am I open? Because I'm tired of a three-two board. I'm tired of that. I don't think that's consistent. I don't think that's productive, and I don't think that's democracy. I think that's politics. So, if a charter review could move us closer to democracy, count me in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ron Saff, and then Malik Reddy.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Reynolds Saff, 2300 Centerville Road in Tallahassee. Good afternoon, everybody. I've been a clean water activist for many, many years, and I've been working with the City of Tallahassee Water Utility for numerous years. We have quarterly meetings, and we've been urging the water utility to urge residents to filter their tap water, and we haven't had much success from the water utility, very, very limited success. So, despite these quarterly meetings, I, it was never mentioned by the water utility people that there was PFAS. PFAS is the teflon chemical, it's found in the drinking water here in Tallahassee. It's the teflon chemical that's called the forever chemical, it's a carcinogen. So, I was quite surprised to read about it, that there's PFAS in the water here. This was all public information. And then subsequently, I found out this, the City of Tallahassee actually sued 3M, which makes the PFAS, and they won, the City of Tallahassee won in a multimillion-dollar, multi-billion dollar suit. And none of this was ever disclosed to me by the City of Tallahassee Water Utility, despite talking to them for years. So, I'm wondering if we do have a problem with PFAS in our drinking water? I suspect we do. I'm wondering if there's some sort of non, sort of nondisclosure from the water utility, because a simple search over the internet found elevated levels of PFAS. This is publicly available information. We found elevated levels at the fire station, of course, elevated levels, health alert levels, eight tenths of a mile away. There's also, again, reports of elevated levels at a paint and body shop on West Pensacola Street. So, it seems like the City of Tallahassee was so concerned about the PFAS that they sued 3M, and I want to read you, because I have the suit in front of me. The plaintiff, City of Tallahassee, brings this action against 3M to recover the cost necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So, I have a simple question. If the City of Tallahassee is so concerned about PFAS in the drinking water that they sued 3M, how come they didn't alert the public?
You have twenty seconds remaining.
And I think we need, I think we need to bring this out. I think we need another meeting to discuss this fully, and I think we, as the public, need answers as to whether or not our water is safe to drink, and whether or not we should be told to filter our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, I am going to ask you to comment on that, since you brought up the lawsuit and to...
Just to give you information on the status of the lawsuit, we have not had a recovery in a lawsuit. We have filed a lawsuit, but I would caution you not to make any statements regarding the litigation, because, as I said, we are in litigation, and that's the best posture to be.
I'm not asking about litigation. I'm asking about whether the City of Tallahassee residents should be informed about whether or not there's a carcinogen in our water.
Dr. Saff, thank you. Thank you. So, Reese, will you also have your staff provide us with a full update?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we've sent numerous updates on this matter with all the details that Mr. Saff has talked about, and we're happy to update.
Dr. Saff, you can sit down. Thank you. We're on public comment. We're going to have the next speaker come. Thank you. But will you provide us with the update?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Of course.
Thank you.
If I can weigh in, because I did meet with Dr. Saff and a couple of other gentlemen, and the information that they provided me, I have provided to the city manager's staff, and I've been updated that they are, have scheduled a meeting with them, and I see Melissa is standing up in the back there, so I know that, what I was told is that a meeting has been scheduled. So, I think what will come forward will be information from that meeting with Dr. Saff and the other gentleman that were with him, that met with me.
Yes, I met with them today as well.
Yeah.
I think we've all had an opportunity to meet with the team.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Malik Reddy. And Mayor, this is the only other speaker I have on this topic. I do have one, but that's for the public hearing later.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, good evening to you and all the commissioners. My name is Malik Reddy, 2215 Cedar Brook Court, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303. I'd like to start off with a quote today, and that quote is, "A leader is one that knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way." John C. Maxwell. I would have to say, the people of Tallahassee have said that we do not want an increase when it comes to our tax. But yet again, you guys show the way, that you are not listening to the people of Tallahassee. 32310 is still one of the lowest zip codes in our city when it comes to the poverty line for tax, for the poverty line for the state of Florida. With the tax dollar being increased, we will never get ahead in that zip code. Now, time and time again, we come here and say what we would like to see. There are options to go different ways when we come talking about the increase in our tax dollar. Yet again, we see a three-to-two vote, and it saddens me, as a 24-year-old black man in this city, that we do not listen to our constituents. I'm hurt. We talk about giving more dollars to our police department, and we talk about the militarization of that. Our citizens are still living in post-traumatic slave disorder, but we are going to increase the tax dollar here. We got some things we need to change. I don't think that's going to come under this leadership, but I would encourage you to start listening to citizens, please. We are hurting. I'm a college student that eat ramen noodles sometimes at night, because I don't have any money. And with the increase in this tax, it's going to hurt me even more. It's too many of us that say, this commission, that say you all are Democrats. Well, I would have to say that you think you all are Moses' s, but you are on Pharaoh's payroll. That's a problem. Please, moving forward, listen to the constituents of Tallahassee. So, we're hurting. Enough is enough. Ella Baker would say, "I'm sick and tired of being tired," and the people of Tallahassee are tired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers on unengageded.
All right, let's go with the sharing of ideas. We'll start with Commissioner Porter and work our way down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. One, I also, I want to thank you, Madam City Attorney, for the presentation. I wasn't able to make it, but I look forward to watching it when I can, and I've heard good things about it. On that note, I was wondering if you could share with us what we spoke about in your correspondence with State Attorney Jack Campbell about the juvenile deferral program, because I wanted to have a quick discussion about that.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I did speak with State Attorney Jack Campbell. He stated that he does have a program, but that program is intended to be utilized in such a way that any, the defendant can't, the defendant can choose which option they would like to utilize among nonprofits and governments. He indicated that the sheriff had a program that was pretty much run by the sheriff's office, which he worked with, but they set up the infrastructure or the employees to run that program, and so they were guaranteed, I guess, a certain number of folks. He indicated if we were interested in such a program, he was open to the idea, but that he would need the city to commit to the body infrastructure to run the program.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I have a couple of follow-ups to that. One is, Mr. City Manager, do we have, when will we receive another update from the sheriff about next steps and the timeline for the council and the status of men in some of their programs? Because we moved forward at the last workshop. I know they're still, they are moving forward, but they're not, I don't believe their strategic plan is, you know, totally complete, and I wouldn't, wouldn't expect it to be. I know we didn't fully fund their request, so I'm really eager to hear an update on that funding and, and that program. And then as a part of that, I know we're all interested in lowering, you know, getting as, keeping as many kids out of, out of jail, out of the system as possible. And so I'm, I am interested in learning more about the sheriff's program, what the state attorney can do in partnership with the city, and if that's something that we're interested in moving forward with, and if that's even part of what the council and the status of men and boys is considering. If you have any input on that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item, I'm happy to extend the commission's inquiry to the sheriff and provide you his answer in terms of an update. Be happy to follow up on that. On the next one, I'm, I feel like we may be confusing topics. The state attorney certainly has a diversion program. TPD actually participates and has discretion when they encounter youth in certain scenarios, and that diversion is not limited by the capacity of programs on the back end of it. I don't think we should confuse those things. So it wouldn't be necessary for the City of Tallahassee to create a parallel or similar program to improve the diversion results. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. As it relates to non-youth, the City of Tallahassee, we have the most robust, by far, Department of Corrections Engagement Program anywhere in our region, where we have members that are incarcerated today. They do, they work for the city and do a variety of tasks. They're at different stages of incarceration. Some are, you know, middle ways, if you will, into their period, and others are about to get out. And so we, we engage heavily in that regard. So any other, those are my thoughts on your comment.
Okay, and thank you for that clarification. Anytime, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would love an update. I don't know if we, do we have another, yeah, I mean, I just would love an update because I still feel a little bit confused about what, what their next steps are and what, what our plan is in supporting them, you know, because we committed the $1 million. I don't even, you know, we changed course for how we were going to spend that money. I know the CHSP category is there, and I don't believe that process has, no one has applied, that process hasn't opened yet. Is that correct?
You're finished.
Mr. Mayor?
For the new category? Yeah, could you update me? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, that's a timely question. Actually, we have ready for your next commission meeting.
Okay.
The Citizens Committee has met. They've made recommendations. We'll bring that forward for your approval on October 11th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't have a motion on, on this issue, but I am concerned, I think we've all seen there have been several cyclists killed this year and one recently, and I'm not sure if it's an item or just an email. I mean, I, I'm curious, I mean, I, you know, I've read some, some people who are kind of experts on this issue, you know, who think that having unprotected bike lanes, I mean, is almost just as bad as not having a bike lane at all, because it gives sort of the false impression of having, you know, a secure lane for cyclists and for drivers. I support the bike lanes, we do, you know, iCycle, I think it's, it's a great step, and I know we're moving closer to having, you know, more protection for bike lanes and, and complete streets. I'm just wondering, you know, I would love to see, I would, I don't know if it's an item comeback, but more information about what in the complete streets, in the infrastructure that we're building in the future and updates we're making, what would it look like, or even currently, like what would it look like? How much would it cost to do an evaluation or an analysis, if we're not already doing one, of where we're seeing, whether it's, it's deaths or injuries, you know, most, the most dangerous parts of the city for cyclists, or, or just the most traveled routes for cyclists on our streets, and what it would look like to put barricades to protect those bike lanes? I'm just interested in learning a little bit more about what, what we're doing and what we could do. And I don't know, you know, I, even if there's reports that the Cycling Committee has already authored that I haven't read, you know, I just kind of want to learn a little bit more about what we're doing as far as that's concerned.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Just to confirm, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we do have a lot of information on that we're happy to share. Obviously, generally what we have would be City of Tallahassee-centric. It could be Leon County, depending upon our approach. And we know that, I think that, obviously, some of these accidents are outside of that, not limited to the City of Tallahassee. But we've got a great deal of information, and we'll pass it along. We're happy to share that with you.
Excellent. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know if I see any of the folks from the downtown neighborhood. Some of them said they might be coming today, so I don't know if, and we haven't heard from any of them. I was, I was going to ask, you know, for an update on what's going on with the 524 East College Avenue, but I think I, I think I got an email explaining that. But for, for the sake of the public, if anyone's listening, I mean, do we have any update on where we are with the fraternity house downtown?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think John Reddick is the most informed on this topic. There's been a lot of discussion. They are in the permitting process. I think that'd still do some information. Mr. Reddick has been in communication with the neighbors extensively and has provided lengthy updates. I think he's more than equipped to share that information here.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In terms of new activity, there's not a lot that's transpired since our last meeting. They have pulled all the necessary permits. We're still waiting on the additional information we've asked for. So in terms of them getting a step closer towards us, blessing it from what they need to do for the structural improvements, we're not there yet, but they have their electrical, mechanical, gas permits that is typical for renovation like this. And so at this point, it's just them working through with contractors to do the improvements of the structure, but, but nothing further that we've heard in terms of disturbances in the area, that nature.
John, will you describe the, the dwelling itself? I think that's probably helpful for everybody to understand, the, the kind of dwelling it is that, that they're planning to renovate.
Sure. So originally constructed as a house in early 20th century, it's been used as a law office for most of, I'll say, 40 years. And so its occupancy is as a law office, and it lacks a lot of current building code requirements for residential occupancy. So it is, they're going through a process of re-establishing it and splitting it into two separate units, where you have, as they're proposing, and we're asking them to confirm, confirm in writing, is, is three residents in each unit, essentially. So they're looking at six total people that would be living in the house permanently. And that's just a reflection of the information they've shared so far.
Mr. Porter, I could tell you that I've had direct conversations with Vice President of Student Affairs Amy Heck, and the university is fully engaged. This is a colony trying to become a fraternity, and there are very strict rules and regulations within the academic community and within the university community in order to achieve that status, and they are, they are fully engaged with the chapter as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the final thing for me is I just would like to go on record saying that I know that some of our, just in general, with, whenever, it would be my preference with the, when the contracts are up for renewal for our appointed officials, that, that that be, you know, even if it's just an informational item or on consent, I think it's, you know, proper just for, for the public to have that awareness, for commissioners to have that awareness. I know some were recently renewed, and I just wanted to, to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too met with Mr. Saaf on, on their concerns and look forward to that update to see what we know and what we have and what we get back. I had a question on Commissioner Porter's questions along the lines of a deferment program. What's the difference between the state attorney's diversion program and what was being suggested that we would, we could possibly create in-house?
As he explained it, I'm sorry, as he explained it to me, that the current program is one that you can have nonprofits participate in as well as governments, and in this case, we do participate in that. But he indicated, and basically, the defendants themselves decide what service they want to do, public service. But he said if we wanted something dedicated only to the city to do roadwork or whatever that is, we would have to provide the, the infrastructure to have that accomplished.
Mr. Matlow, I'd give you an example from the government side. It's not uncommon for people that are in deferment to like help out at the animal shelter, clean up, and wash down and that kind of, you know.
Yeah, I did, I was, there was a little confusion between the two different programs, and just wanted clarity of the issue. My final question, Mr. City Manager, is where, where, where do we budget? When we have trash cleanup, along Gain Street, we have trash cans and people come up and, and pick out trash, is that community beautification? Is that parks? How do we, where does that, how's that funded?
Sure. Manager?
It depends. It is, it's not in our waste man, like, it's easier for me to tell you where it's not. It's not in our waste management category. I think we often talk of it in that way, but we have a solid waste or waste management group. They pick up things in containers and it's very organized. In our downtown, the bulk pickup, things of this nature. When we're talking like downtown, for example, our parks and rec crews generally clean up lots of the downtown, so they're, they're doing that. Some, they do some of the work along Cascades, of course, and that starts to get into Gain Street. There's a handoff, a pretty seamless handoff, to our community beautification group that maintains right-ofways and that kind of thing. And so between the two of them largely, that's where we're addressing right-ofway management, which would include trash collection. We also fund each year, Keep Tallahassee Leon County Beautiful. They do the Adopt a Street, kind of the organization on, really on our behalf, the governments may have to get volunteers to do cleanup as well. So that's kind of part of our operation. So it's a mixture. It's not by solid waste. It would be either our community beautification, right-ofway management, or Parks and Rec, or it could be through Keep Tallahassee Leon County Beautiful.
Okay. No, yeah, that's helpful. I, I'm curious of having an expanded conversation at a later date of which roadways we include, what areas are most important and should be targeted areas for litter abatement as well as trash collection. I, it seems, it's a mix, different apartments, and maybe needs a, a general oversight citywide of where we're seeing the, the most issues and where we can have the most impact. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I had was to announce that we are in Hispanic Heritage Month, started September 15th and will end October 15th, and Hola Tallahassee is sponsoring a celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month this coming Sunday, October 1st, starting at 1:00 PM at the Antique Car Museum. And I'm sure Samantha Rojas, who is the organizer of the event, would welcome all of us to be there for that occasion. Well, I'm not quite, it's Erica, Samantha, yeah, Rojas, Ms. Rojas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mayor Patelin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just received a text from State Representative Allison Tinn announcing the Leon County delegation meeting that will be held here at City Hall on October 5th at 5:00 PM. So our local delegation, which would include herself, State Representative Jason Schof, State Senator Cory Simon, and State Representative Gallup Franklin will be here. As you know, this is held annually, it's normally held at courthouse, but I guess we've gotten too large for the courthouse. So they're coming to the bigger, to the upper chamber to do this. So it is open and free to the public. This is where you have your opportunity to talk to our local delegation about the upcoming session. As you know, session begins in January this year, and committee meetings have already begun, and if you got, you have something you really want them to know, this is the time to let them know, to know that. And I think that's all.
Excellent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you so very, very much for what you did today.
Yes.
In presenting our charter and educating our public on the charter, and I was able to watch it online, and I know others were able to watch it on our television channel online, and it will be available to re-watch. So I would just thank you for putting together a very powerful and impactful educational tool on our charter. And so looking forward to, I didn't get to see it from the beginning, but I look forward to seeing it from the beginning, and from what I've heard, it was outstanding, what I saw was outstanding. And thank you for fielding the question. I know Commissioner Richardson, I saw him in the video on the front row, so you might have taught him a thing or two.
Listening to Tinn.
My pleasure.
But thank you. And as I understand it, that will be available also on the, I'm looking at Federal Clerk, the, the survey, the portal open today, right?
Yes, ma'am. The effort was to ensure that that was available at the same time as the education is available, and both are going to link together.
So we look forward to, and thank you all for, and thank my colleagues as well for supporting my request to have some public engagement and education to help feed this process. So thank you very much.
Excellent. I have nothing. We stand adjourned until 6 o'clock public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. It is 6:01 in chambers, and we will go ahead for item number one. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second public hearing on, on your budget for fiscal year '24. This is a culmination of many months of, of process, and it is, it is a, the final stop in which you will adopt a statutorily required balanced budget. We've got a short presentation for you today to reiterate the items that are in the budget, hit the high points, and Robert Wigan, our Director of Financial Resources, will lead us.
And Robert Wigan, our Director of Financial Resources, will lead us through the presentation. Thank you, Robert.
Robert?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and members of the community. As mentioned with our seventh meeting, we'll be adopting a fiscal year '24 budget. It's the budget recommendation, recommended actions are to receive public input, input, of course, and adopt the budget for the City of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority. We also are asking for approval of a resolution for the foreclosure registry fee that you established a few meetings ago. Option two is also recommended to approve the fiscal year '24 funding allocations for the human service partnerships and authorize the City Manager to enter into service contracts with nonprofit providers. As you well know, efficient and effective services are reducing or controlling expenditures. We've discussed that 60 lane miles of roads each year have been maintained, even while we're absorbing a 46% increase in the cost of asphalt, which is saving millions of dollars. We recommend replenishing the Special Insurance Reserve Fund over four years in a fiscally responsible manner to guide us through that replenishment. And then also saving dollars, the city fleet drives a million miles a month delivering services to our community and yet the fleet replacement fund has only increased by 22% while absorbing cost increases in light duty vehicles and heavy duty vehicles. As part of this budget, it does recognize that employees are our greatest asset, that we need to stay competitive in the marketplace and therefore recommending a 5% pay increase with a guarantee of $2,000 as a minimum increase for employees. We also are recommending systematic public safety initiatives, including Tempo, Tifla, TEAM, many of the programs that have been established for a number of years by the City Commission. We also recognize in this budget that affordable electric utility bills are important and we know that when compared to other utilities, our customers are paying less. In fact, $91 million less over the last year. And then as updated earlier, we're furthering capital improvement projects like the Lake Bradford Road Fire Station, as well as the Second Senior Center, and then maintaining roads and sidewalks as directed. A key goal of this fiscal year '24 final budget adoption is to address violent crime and to meet those strategic planning goals. We're recommending adding 20 new officers and advanced video software and artificial intelligence technology. This investment in public safety is an increase of .35 mils. That's a 43% reduction from our original recommendation as we've worked through this budget process of an increase of .62 mils. A majority of property owners will see a monthly increase of $3.50 or less per month and a majority of multifamily property owners will see an increase of $2 or less. We're seeing similar impacts in the business community. As I mentioned earlier, part of this budget adoption, as is typical this time of year, is to approve the community human service partnership. That partnership invests in a broad range of human service programs. $3.2 million of city funding will be dispersed in fiscal year '24. And with that brief overview, unless there are immediate questions or clarifications, the City Attorney will guide us through prescribed steps and make recommendations for approving options one and two as presented in the agenda item.
Robert, thank you. Okay, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As a part of this agenda item, there are two additional recommended actions besides the approval of the milledage and budget of the city and the DIA. Number one, Resolution Number 23-R-16, providing for foreclosure registry fee, will be presented for approval as a part of this item. And number two, the approval of the FY '24 funding allocations for human services partnerships and authorizing the City Manager or his designated to enter into service contracts with nonprofit providers. These items will take place after the milledage and budget approvals. First, for the approval process for the city and DIA milledage rate and budgets. Baron Commissioners, there are certain things I need to read into the record and then we'll take public comment on the milledage rate and on the proposed budget for the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority that staff has discussed with you. After you've heard the public comment and before you vote on the budget, there will be time for your discussion of the proposed budget. This is the second and final hearing on fiscal year 2024 budget. This final hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Friday, September 22nd, 2023, in compliance with Florida Statute, Section 200.065. Neither the date of the hearing, the date of the first hearing, September 13th, nor today's date conflicts with any City Commission or School Board meeting hearing dates. Again, I need to read the following statement into the record. The proposed, excuse me, the proposed final milledage rate for fiscal year 2024 is 4.45 mils for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8571 by 15.93%. Attachment A to the agenda item is Resolution Number 23-R-27, which states the percentage that the final milledage rate is above the rollback rate. Now it is time for the public to speak on the city's milledage rate and proposed budget.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any comments on the public, from the public?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Got about a half dozen in person and then one connected virtually.
Wonderful, let's begin.
Our first speaker is Oliver Cheese. And then next will be Isabella Casanova. Speakers will have three minutes for remarks from the podium there in the middle of the room. There's a light in front of the mayor that will be green and it'll turn yellow at two and a half minutes. And I'll also give you a heads up that you're near three.
Great, your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Oliver Cheese and I decline to give my address. Yes, where are the solutions, there we go, where are the solutions to crime in Tallahassee? Well, you won't find them down the barrel of a gun. You'll find them in the vital projects and the core services which our people need and which our city ought to be providing. Nobody wakes up in the morning and just decides to be a criminal. The rise in crime is not a fluke. It's happening because more people than ever today are homeless. More people than ever are out of a job and our most vulnerable communities aren't getting the support they need to get back on their feet. Make no mistake, this is a failure of our city government on every level to support real solutions to our economic crisis. And it's only going to get worse until real action is taken, not Band-Aid solutions like overpolicing, raising our taxes and our rents to fund a police department that has failed previously to restrain violent crime in this city and which has been recently stripped of almost all of its oversight from the Civilian Police Review Board, is not going to solve our crime crisis. All it's going to do is make more people far poorer. It's going to put more people out of their apartment, out of their house, and it's going to push those people onto the streets and into crime. We need to be supporting solutions like the Affordable Housing Proposal, which our City Commission shot down previously. We need to be supporting solutions which are going to allow our weakest and most vulnerable communities to really be able to stand on their own two feet and be able to support themselves. Right now, our city government is instead proposing solutions that would further empower a police department which is trained with known war criminal Eddie Gallagher and which is already, and which has been guilty of several explicit murders over the past year. Not to mention the beating of Jockez Kirkland, a black man in Tallahassee's community, for which they faced absolutely no consequences. This is not a real solution to crime. This is not a solution to anything. All it's going to do is waste more city money to fund the ineffective force and all it's going to do is put more people in Tallahassee further below the poverty line. I might yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Isabella Casanova and then Delilah Pierre.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Isabella Casanova, 836 West Georgia Street. Hi, I've been here before. I'm here with TCAC, Tallahassee Community Action Committee. I'm also the former president of FSU Students for a Democratic Society and I'm here representing SDS today. But besides from being an FSU student, I'm a teacher at Rickards, James S. Rickards High School here in Tallahassee. I'm very proud to be a teacher at Rickards. I teach AP US History. I left work to come here. As you can see, I'm not dressed in a SDS shirt as I would be. And I'm here not just because I don't want my rent to raise and because, you know, I care about supporting TCAC, but because I care about my students. Every day, my students know that if they don't eat at school, they're not going to have food at home. It's the only meals that they get, the free lunch and free breakfast that's provided at school. There are two school resource officers on our school campus and my students are afraid to interact with them because they know that interacting with police does not end well in their communities. So why would it end well at school? The police have to apprehend students at my school several times a week for no reason, really. You know, overreaction to things. If you do your research, more than half of this city's budget already goes towards our police and our city budget towards policing has increased in the past three years higher than it's ever been. And I'm going to be honest, I don't see the fruits of that. I don't see crime decreasing. Instead, what I see on my street is police harassing homeless people. I see it every single day outside of my bedroom window. Just the other day, there were armed, you know, people with guns running around on Tharp Street and it took the police almost 12 hours to find them. What are we giving police so much money for if they can't even solve crime effectively? Erin Gleason was just sentenced to life in prison yesterday for the murder of Alu Toian Salau, someone who could have been helped by police, but she wasn't because she was a Black Lives Matter protester and the police chose to twiddle their thumbs instead of help someone in this community. And it's happened time and time again. Not only are you giving police more money where they don't need it, but you're deciding to strip the Civilian Police Review Board of any powers they have of actually holding police accountable. As a teacher, as a community member, as a student, it's shameful. And something needs to change. I see that. Something needs to change because giving more and more money to police and not to these children who are our future, to these community members, I want to serve this community as a teacher. But I feel like I can't because no matter what I do in the classroom, these students don't have the resources they need outside of it to succeed and that's up to y'all to fix, not me.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre, to be followed by Joel Nunez.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Delilah Pierre. I use she/her pronouns. I am the president of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. I will not be giving you my address. So yesterday I bought Taco Bell and it cost like $25 and it just made me think about how prices are rising everywhere, how people in Tallahassee are choosing between paying their rent or paying their utility bill, between paying their mortgage or feeding their children. And at this time of serious, not just economic, but political attack against queer people, against trans people, against black people in the state of Florida, you'd think that our City Commission would unite to help people, to give people resources, to use the abundance of wealth and money they have to fight for people. But instead, our conservative City Commissioners, Diane William Cox, Curtis Titcherton, and John Daly, are giving the police a $10 million raise, which by the way, reduces the amount of money they were giving to training previously for the police. They want us to talk about Leon County's crime rate. That's what they're going to tell you in response to this, they're predictable. They're going to say, the crime rate is rising, we need police to stop it, even though the crime rate has been lowering since 2020. I feel like our City Commissioners are more worried about their donors from the Fraternal Order of Police and the Tallahassee Police Department and their connection to them. I feel like Daly, and as I like to call them, his lackeys, aren't really concerned about crime. Because if you were concerned about crime, you would take a proactive approach. Solving homelessness, solving hunger, solving problems like the mental health issues that plague this community. That's how you solve crime in the City of Tallahassee, not a reactive approach, meaning having cops come afterwards and clean up the mess. The way you solve the problems in our community is giving the people the resources they need. If you're tired of seeing homeless people around, well then guess what? You need to house them. If you don't want to get stolen from, give people money so they're not constantly fighting and desperate for resources. And we can talk about the Civilian Police Review Board too, because this is a central part of it. At the same time as you raise the budget of these police officers, you totally destroy the power of the Civilian Police Review Board to have any autonomy, any independence. They're not even able to make social media posts or do community outreach. Tell me how that's democratic? Tell me what democratic city, what city of so-called progressives, liberals, would do something that takes away the power of a city board to even have its own independence to make a social media post?
You have about 30 seconds.
You don't care whether people are safe or thriving. You don't even care if they're surviving. You just want to punish people who are not. TCAC demands the city reverse recent revisions to the CPRB's policy and procedures drafted by the City Attorney. We insist the City Commission vote no on the 14% tax increase to property taxes for policing. Invest in people, not police. Y'all aren't doing your work and we're coming for you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Joel Nunez, followed by Regina Joseph.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Joel Nunez. I live off Pensacola Street and I'm the current president of FSU Students for a Democratic Society. And a big issue today, what everyone wants to talk about, the increase in property tax. Make no mistake, this is a pretty drastic measure, right? This is going to cost y'all popularity points. Everybody's rent is going to increase in the middle of a nationwide housing crisis. And so, and yet you guys insist on going through with it. And what do y'all need all this money for? Let's take a look. What is so drastic that it requires an increase in everybody's property taxes? $10 million in new funding for the police. The police already take up the lion's share of the city budget. At the last year's budget and, oops, and the year before and the year before, every single year, y'all increase the police budget. And for what? What are we getting out of this? Not to mention, you guys voted no on a $5 million plan for affordable housing. So let me get this right. You guys voted no on affordable housing, but are spending twice that in raising people's rents to pay for the police? How is this going to help people? Additionally, y'all are lowballing the firefighters' union. And last I checked, nobody really likes police, but everybody loves firefighters. So tell me, what kind of democracy is this? Not to mention, like other speakers before me have said, the changes in the rules and procedures of the Civilian Police Review Board. You guys want to strip away their powers even more so than they already were? Because let's be real, they didn't have any real power over the police. And now y'all are trying to cut that down even more after the whole fiasco with Taylor Bureau. And so what it looks like to me is that you guys want more police, less accountability at the cost of everyone else. And I am disappointed. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Regina Joseph and then Bernard Stevens.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Regina Joseph, I will not be giving my address. Okay, hey, everybody. Again, my least favorite people to see every, what, second and fourth Wednesday? I don't remember. Honestly, I'm tired. I'm really tired. I'm just so tired of looking at your smirks, ignoring us, looking at your phone, just not caring about why we're here. And I just believe that y'all are so shortsighted because you get rid of the one mechanism which didn't have any power to begin with, that'll let people believe that they have the littlest amount of democracy and voice. And you get rid of it. Because you want to, you know, toe the good old boy lines. You want to care about developers and what they want and you listen to what Reese Goode wants. He's not electable, y'all are. So think for a second. And the City Attorney herself brought up concerns about the fact there was a police officer, a TPD police officer, who was tested for methamphetamines. And he said he accidentally took his child's Adderall. And, yeah, that's absolutely ridiculous. And Reese Goode himself shut down Cassandra Jackson. And Reese Goode himself shut down Cassandra Jackson and got the woman who blew the whistle about this fired. What the hell is wrong with y'all? Tell me, why is it okay for a police officer to abuse drugs, and we're throwing people in jail for drugs? And this person has a gun and a badge and the ability to hurt and kill people, and you don't care about that? You accept that? And I know y'all are so shortsighted because we know the movement is going to pick back up, because we know this country, which has been built on 500 years of white supremacy and slavery and genocide, will keep doing what it's doing, which is to brutalize black and brown people and poor people, and we know there will be another uprising, another rebellion. So how do you look when we have hundreds of people coming in here and yelling at you, John Daly, Diane Williams-Cox, and Curtis Richardson, as I like to affectionately call them, the triumph of evil? You can keep smirking. You will not be smirking when your time comes, when there is that reckoning, because you sit so comfortably in your seats right now, but you will regret every single decision that you have made that has put poor people's lives at risk. When you vote against affordable housing, when you allow police officers to get away with doing drugs, when you allow police officers to get away with brutalizing black people, when you allow that, you are on the wrong side of history. It was Diane Williams-Cox herself who condemned the pro-choice protesters that were arrested and had the audacity to...
You're at three minutes.
And had the audacity to say that these people were wrong, and at the same breath, quote Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you very much.
What is wrong with y'all?
Thank you very much. Your time is up. We appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Stop overpolicing, invest in our communities, and not the police.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Our next speaker, please.
Bernard Stevens, followed by Tavion.
My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr., and my address is exempt. Ladies and gentlemen, my brothers and my sisters that's in this meeting today, for those of you that will oppose this city budget, you know what you have to do when August of 2024 come, when August of 2026 come, okay? Now, to the police officers, we don't have no problem with you, but we got something to do with your accountability, because you don't hold your own accountable for when they do wrong. And then, when you try to reach out to Chief Revel in his office, he ain't never available, or he talked to whoever he want to talk to. And it's funny that y'all four sit here and take this as a game. I tell you what, let me make this more clear for you. The General Assembly in Florida in 1855, male slaves, there were 24,509. Female slaves, there were 24,629. Free persons of color, male, 336, female, 438, total Florida population of 110,000. Now, the value of a slave back then was about $550. Now, between the total value of all these slaves was $27,250,000. So it goes to show that right now, what we're dealing with is you all want to continue to lock up the black race when you sit here and you don't even help them. Now, if we continue to go through the same thing over and over and over again, you don't care about your own kind. And forgive me, the black race had to go through 400 years of oppression. The black race was the only race who could not read. The black race was the only race who had to be whipped and harmed. But yet, instead, you sit here and you still don't want to lock them up? I done had enough, and I done told y'all once before. You sit here and you call yourself leaders. You sit here and you call yourself children of God. God does not operate in mess, and he's not the author of confusion. You got a budget where you can sit there and redo funds instead of raising taxes on every single citizen in this city. I done had enough. You sit here, you smile, you put your head down. But when have y'all took the time to go out in the community? Horton Street has had a shooting every got dog on week. Every week, somebody getting shot. Every week, somebody over there shooting a gun, running around. You ain't doing nothing. Your officers come over there, they don't want to talk. You know why they don't want to talk? Because if they talk, they don't get Marxist law to protect them. Their house get shot up after they done told. These people are scared. They are afraid, and y'all don't do nothing.
25 seconds.
25 seconds, huh? With my last 25 seconds, I'm going to tell y'all this here. Enough is enough. You either going to care about all, or you going to care about some. That flag over there says, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." That word, united, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all, not some but all. Get up and do your job.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tavion. That's the last speaker I have in person, mayor. I do have one virtual.
All right. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tavion. I live in Tallahassee. I am the vice president of Students for Democratic Society, FSU. And I want to ask you, do y'all know where crime comes from? It doesn't appear out of thin air. It stems from poverty. It stems from a lack of resources, from a lack of education, from a lack of housing. And for you to increase our rents? Who is this for? Do you serve the people of Tallahassee, or do you serve the developers of Tallahassee? Do you serve the police of Tallahassee, the police who've gotten away with brazen, police brutality, abuses of power, drug use on the job? Who do you serve? Do you serve us, or do you serve them? Really? Who actually wants rent to be increased? Nobody wants that. We don't want that. There is a housing crisis happening in Florida right now. I count myself lucky. I have a reasonable rent. I don't want myself or my friends and people I don't even know, people within our community, to be displaced, put on the streets, begging for a place to live, having to resort to the very thing that you're trying to prevent. Crime doesn't come out of thin air. It comes from a lack of resources. You are trying to strip those resources from people. You do not represent the people of Tallahassee. If you vote to increase property taxes, you're proving that.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Gordon Cox, who I'm told did not connect, so that's the last speaker.
Okay. All right. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, mayor. At this point in time, we need to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage rate, which is 1 mil, and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget, which is $579,401, as presented on September 13th. This hearing for the Downtown Improvement Authority has been advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Friday, September 22nd, 2023, in compliance with Florida Statute, Section 200.065.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No additional speakers.
Okay. Madam Attorney.
At this point, mayor, we need a motion for approval of the city's final millage rate of 4.45 mils, as reflected in Resolution 23-R-27, the title which reads as follows. Resolution number 23-R-27, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, as 4.45 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8571 by 15.93%, and provided an effective date. And this millage rate is more than the rollback rate. Is there a motion for approval of the final millage rate?
So moved. Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, and I will second it.
Now is the opportunity for the commission to discussion on the city's proposed millage rate and vote on the motion.
Open it up for discussion. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote against this millage rate increase. This is our second public hearing, and we've had numerous budget workshops, and through all of that, we've had very little discussion. We've had very little discussion about budget reductions, where we can find savings. We've heard very little actual input from members of this body, and we've continued to push forward a recommendation that started a year ago. And it feels like we're largely going through motions without actually doing any of the hard work to figure out how we can save the people of Tallahassee money. You know, I pointed to over $5 million in reductions we could make this fiscal year to the budget, including things like capping the 5% pay raises for executives making over $100,000 a year, including looking to departments that don't serve core functions, like strategic innovation, that is relatively new, that provides something more than what people ask for their city to provide. You know, I asked us to look at luxury travel. You know, we all saw pictures from Amelia Island with people playing games on the beach, but tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money paid for city officials to go to that retreat. It's not professional development. It's not training. It's just the party at the beach with the Chamber of Commerce. And if we can't put small things on the chopping block, just obvious things people don't want their tax dollars being spent to, yeah, we'll ask them for more of their hard-earned money. You know, when people are already struggling, when we know it's going to impact rents, and we can say it's $3.50, but that's not including the value of their house going up and what that's going to add to their tax bill. It's not including the value of their house going up and what the county portion's going to add to their tax bill. And also, it's more than $3.50 that people are going to pay for property, and that's also looking at if you have a homestead exemption. So when we're talking about rental properties, those are investment properties for owners that aren't going to have that homestead exemption. So overall, it is pushing up. We haven't looked for any type of cuts, and we could make cuts. And we spent a year talking about this entire tax increase is about law enforcement, which frankly, that's not true, because what we decided by not making any cuts is that these luxury travels are more important than law enforcement, that strategic innovation was more important than law enforcement, that making sure people who are already making over $200,000 a year got raises was more important than law enforcement. So this tax increase, it's a sham to tie those two issues together, even from the bottom level. We should have a responsible discussion of what public safety looks like in our community, because public safety should be the bedrock of what our city government is providing. It should be the base. It's not something that's at the top that's pushing a tax increase. It's all the waste in between that's pushing this tax increase. And if we look at core functions of what we want our government to accomplish in public safety, in affordable housing, in public transportation, in, you know, basic infrastructure and sidewalks, if we put that as a baseline and scrapped everything else and built our budget up, we wouldn't be asking for more money. We'd realize we have way more money than we already need to accomplish what the people want us to do. So respectfully, I cannot support a millage rate increase. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else cared to comment? Motion's on table, made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by myself. I want to take a second to thank Mr. Wigan and the entire nationally recognized budget team for your hard work and dedication. I know that y'all have been working, and this is what you do year-round. We have been at this process, what, since the spring? And you have walked us through workshop after workshop on department by department, issue by issue. I think this budget is a good budget. I plan on supporting this budget by seconding the motion on the table. I appreciate your hard work, and under the leadership of the city manager, I look forward to moving forward. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye. All those opposed? And the motion passes 3 to 2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent.
The next step, step eight, is to approve the city's final fiscal year 2024 budget, reflected in the appropriations resolution 23-R-28, the title which reads as follows. Resolution number 23-R-28, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, designating the sources of revenue in said appropriations and provided an effective date, and which reflects all changes to the proposed budget that were previously approved by the city commission. Is there a motion for approval of the 2024 budget as reflected in Resolution number 23-R-28?
All right. Is there a motion on the table? Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. I will second the motion. Let's open it up for discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye. All those opposed? And the budget passes. The motion passes 3 to 2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. Madam Attorney.
Now, is there a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final millage rate of 1 mil and to move for approval of Resolution 23-R-27?
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, and I will second the motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this motion include the foreclosure registry fee?
No.
Okay. I was confused of why they were bundled together in option one on this slide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is the Downtown Improvement Authority millage rate correct?
Correct.
Yep. Which you represent us on. All those in favor of the proposed motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Madam Attorney.
Is there a motion to approve the Downtown Improvement Authority's final fiscal year 2024 budget, which totals $579,401, and Resolution 23-R-28?
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, and I will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Madam Attorney.
That concludes the commission's required actions on the fiscal year 2024 budget for the city of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority. Finally, as a part of this item, there are two additional items to consider. The first is Resolution 23-R-16, providing for an annual registration fee for registration of properties in foreclosure in accordance with ordinance number 23-O-23, which reads, "Resolution number 23-R-16, a resolution providing that the annual registration fee for registration of properties in foreclosure in accordance with ordinance number 23-O-23 shall be $200 and provided an effective date." Are there any public speakers on this item?
There are no speakers.
Okay. Is there a motion on the table? It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. I will second it. Any discussion? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want a clarification on the revenue collection from this registry. What can those funds be used for? Where into the budget would those funds end up? Mr. Manager.
Well, by law, the fee could only be used for the program, the running of the program.
Okay. So it's just a collection of fee, and then it just kind of execute the program to have their registry?
Using the funds that are derived for the execution of the program. That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to be in opposition to this item. It just seems like an unnecessary level of bureaucracy, just creating a program to collect fees that I don't really see the value and the end result. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes 4 to 1 with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. Madam Attorney.
The second item for consideration is the human services allocations and a request to permit the city manager a designated to execute service contracts with nonprofit providers. Are there any public speakers on this item?
There are none.
All right. Any discussion or motions? It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. I will second the motion. Any comment? Commissioner Matlow.
I mean, I think I've said this a couple of times over the... Every time we take this vote, I think it's just so clear how woefully underfunded human services are. I mean, this is pennies on the dollar. I mean, fractions of pennies on the dollar, and it's really addressing our most pressing issues in our community. At some point, when we start talking about homeless services, all the different, you know, rent assistance, all these things that are valuable in our community, but the smallest bucket always seems to be human services. You know, I'm going to support the motion of what we allocated, but I do think as we have these conversations year after year after year, it's always disheartening that, you know, projects that pop up in the private sector and only have a week's consideration are getting almost as much money as our entire allocation to human services across all aspects of support that we expect them to do in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I think we, and perhaps the city manager can clarify this, this is combined between city and county, the human services piece, isn't it? Isn't this one of those things that we're together on?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, actually, this is nationally recognized in terms of the community approach. The dollars are pooled between contributions from the city and the county, and they're largely given to a citizen-driven structure of committees that then decide and make recommendations to you as to what can be funded. to you as to what can be funded in terms of, you know, nonprofits, human service-related nonprofits. And so that's the approach, what the city contributes and then what the county contributes, then it's categorized and the citizens rank it.
And those nonprofits, also, you can use these dollars to leverage other dollars from donors, federal grants, and other types of grants to get those services provided, much like we do at the city of Tallahassee.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, they do. And then they have access to other contributions, not just government-related contributions, as you point out.
I just wanted to make that clear for those who might be watching, because I like for folks to know how things actually work, not just based on a comment that is made, but one that is deeper. And if anyone is interested in how this, any of this worked, I'm sure our staff would be happy to explain to them how it has worked for all these years and then how it continues to work. And as a matter of fact, just maybe a couple of years ago, we did some things to change some policies to make it better, and we worked with some of our local community partners to make sure that we do what we can to help with housing and human services. So I just want, for those who may be watching and may be interested, we are doing a lot more with these dollars than is being minimalized with some of the comments. I just want the public to know that.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, you know, and I just wanted to say too, we have had a longstanding partnership with human services programs in our community through the city, through contributions from our staff to provide the kinds of assistance that they provide in this community. They welcome that partnership. They welcome the funds that we provide for them. Those are not part of the basic city functions and programs that we provide for residents, but we've partnered with those human services organizations so that they can reach a broader and wider constituency of residents that they serve. And I think it's been a wonderful partnership over the years. It's one that I've been proud of and a part of, donating my own personal funds. I just got a stack of thank you notes from the children with the Big Ben Kelsey's organization. What is that, Commissioner? The, ah, Kelsey's, Boys and Girls Club. I'm sorry. I was having one of my senior moments. Thank you. A stack of thank you cards from the children at the Boys and Girls Club, where I donated personal funds, and they welcomed that. So we, those organizations welcome the partnership that they share with the city and with the county and with our employees, and it just helps them to be able to better serve their constituents here in our county. And again, for clarification purposes, for those who are listening and know that we, you know, personally, if we've got the funds, we should be donating as well. But I know it's a very strong relationship. It's one that we didn't always have, and I can assure you that the community and human services programs in this community welcome that partnership and want to see it continue and to become stronger. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. There's a motion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I mean, I don't know, Commissioner Matlow, you want to clarify? I mean, that was, my understanding was not that it was a critique of the CHSP process or that partnership. I'm a little confused about what the comments were made about.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're correct, Commissioner Porter. I'm grateful for the work that all of the nonprofits do in our community, but we shouldn't act as if we're doing them some sort of favor. I mean, they're taking a huge burden off of our shoulders for things that people in our community expect to see. And frankly, taxpayers will bear the brunt of the aftermath when people can't, when people are having mental health issues and have nowhere to go, when people don't have a place to sleep, when people are being underfed. Like, these are our responsibilities, and we've segmented it into such a way. My critique is, talk to any nonprofit and ask them if they have enough resources to fulfill their mission. They're all struggling. They all need more. The demand is way above what they're able to deliver. And with shoestring budgets, you know, they're out there every day making miracles happen with what they can, but that doesn't mean as a city government, we can't recognize the nonprofits that are struggling in our community, the people who are doing the hard work, which we decided isn't a government function. In a lot of communities, these things are government functions, and say, maybe $3 million into a bucket that people can all, you know, apply over and it gets spread a million different ways, maybe isn't enough money to really meet the need, even with federal funding, even with county funding, even with state funding. It's still less than we give to other things that are frankly, less deserving. It's less than the giveaways that we push into private enterprises. And for what? For what? I mean, that's my point. It's not saying the CHSP process is bad. I think it's a good process to make sure that the money that we do put into place goes through a process and lands in responsible hands of the organizations that are really doing the work. My critique is, the city government does not put enough money into the CHSP process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And yet, not a single motion has been made by anyone on this day, including Commissioner Matlow or Commissioner Porter, to increase the amount of money into the CHSP process. Let me remind all of my colleagues that during the seven-month process that we go through the budget, there is ample opportunity to make a motion at any time to raise the increase. It is easy to stand up here and have all talk with no action, but let's recognize it for what it is. There is a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it passes five zero. Madam Attorney.
This completes the action items in item number 14.01.
Closing out this once again, regardless of votes, I do think I speak, well, I will speak for myself, and I want to thank once again the budget team for the fine job that y'all do year-round. And congratulations, we have passed a balanced budget for the fiscal year coming up. We are on item number 14.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on resolution number 23-r-26, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Tallahassee adopting the 2023 Affordable Housing Inventory List. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt resolution number 23-r-26, approving the inventory list of all real property within the city jurisdiction, which the city holds fee simple title that is appropriate for use as affordable housing.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues.
So moved.
Properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Commissioner Richardson.
It is my understanding that this property, once it's identified, can and will be used for affordable housing within our community. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear for anyone listening or watching. Another effort by the city of Tallahassee to provide affordable housing for the residents of this community that are unhoused. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 14.03. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.03 is the second and final public hearing on the development agreement for Capital Circle Office Complex. Recommended action is option one, conduct the second and final public hearing on the Capital Circle Office Complex Development Agreement and approve the agreement. This item requests the City Commission to hold the second and final public hearing concerning a development agreement between the city and the state of Florida concerning the development of the Capital Circle Office Complex. This item also requests that the City Commission rescind the development order of the Capital Circle Office Complex Development of Regional Impact pursuant to the request from the property owner. The property owner, property is located west of Capital Circle, southeast and north of Tram Road, and is approximately 341 acres. Proposed development contains office space and a new state emergency operations center. The first matter to be completed is to conduct the public hearing on the proposed agreement. Action then will be required on options one and two.
Okay, so we are dealing with the development agreement of the newly proposed state EOC.
Correct.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Darren Taylor here is here to answer questions, otherwise no speakers.
Great. Thank you for being here. All right.
Move acceptance of the recommendation.
Properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 14.04. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-z-01, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Capital Circle Office Complex Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on approximately 341 acres along Capital Circle Southeast between Blairstone Road and Tram Road on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee. Provided for conflicts, provided for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-z-01, thereby amending the Capital Circle Office Complex PUD Concept Plan based on the findings and conditions of the planning commission, information contained in this agenda item, and any evidence presented at the hearing hereon. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
So once again, Madam Attorney, so we're clear, this is an amendment to the planned unit development of the proposed state emergency operations center. Correct?
Amending of the zoning map for that. Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
Darren Taylor is here to answer questions, if any. Otherwise, no speakers.
Excellent. Colleagues.
So moved.
Properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 14.05. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.05 is the first of two public hearings on the development agreement for the Wallany Hill property. The second and final hearings is scheduled for October 25, 2023. Recommended action is option one, hold the first public hearing on the development agreement and schedule the second and final public hearing for October 25, 2023.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Richard Gerardi is here to answer questions, if any, and also Gary Hunter.
Okay. Comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter, your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners Gary Hunter, 119 South Monroe Street, Suite 500.
Thank you. And you represent Greenpoint Developers on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you negotiated this contract that's before us?
Yes, sir. I was one of the negotiators, yes, sir.
And who at the city do you negotiate with when you go through the nuts and bolts of this?
The growth management department primarily, but others as well. I mean, all over the city had a hand in developing the development agreement.
Okay. And I just want to be clear, we are represented by council, and there is an expectation that negotiations would go through council.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you. I do have questions on the project from the city manager.
Thanks, Mr. Hunter.
I wanted to talk about the requirement. It's on page six. It speaks to the Canopy Road connection at McKisskey. The city agrees that this project is not required to apply for or receive any Canopy Road-related approval from the city or any other committee. Board or entity goes on to say, it will be presented to the Canopy Road Citizens Committee for purposes of awareness, essentially only. What was the reasoning for adding that into this agreement?
Manager, John?
John, can you answer that, please?
Sure. I can answer that, and that's following discussions about that, that segment of the connection of the spine road to McKisskey Road and confirmation for the developer that the Canopy Road Citizens Committee, which would have a review and feedback in the ultimate design of that connection, is an advisory board in nature and is not the ultimate authority of approving that connection.
So in essence, it will be going through the appropriate process with the Canopy Road Advisory Committee, but recognizing that, like all of our advisory committees, their decisions are not legally binding because they are an advisory committee making recommendations back.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow, you have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the expectation in the contract, what was to clarify that, or was there concern about the effects on the Canopy Road?
No, just to clarify that in terms of the role of the committee in that process.
Okay. I had a couple of questions on the Mayhand Drive improvements. This is the section where the spine road would connect to Mayhand Drive. I think it's 1,000 feet widening.
Yes.
Where the development connects.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to get an understanding of how the allocations of the trips. It said the project will account for 30% of the trips on Mayhand Drive.
Sure. And that's, and I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, go ahead.
The widening of that will be, is, that will be coordinated through FDOT and HASBAN as part of this process of what they will require to be able to support that level of development connecting that portion of Mayhand. But the acknowledgement is that they, that the developer will be paying for the full expansion of that, but it will create capacity in that area that will go beyond what is actually required for them to be able to utilize that. So essentially, in the developer's construction of that, they'll be creating additional capacity for other users elsewhere in that area. And so that's why the level of credit is different than just the, essentially, they're getting credit, additional credit for what's being done.
Is the 100% capacity only based on expanded traffic in the future, or does that include current traffic that goes down the drive?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So you have 30% from the new development, and then the other 70% of traffic. Is that all new traffic, or does that include existing traffic?
That would be new traffic utilizing that. That would be essentially to say, the 70% remaining threshold can be added to that roadway segment, and while we maintain our required minimum level of service for that roadway.
Okay. And so at some point in the future, we would expect new development that would cover that cost? Do we have any information on how the new development's going to impact Mayhand Drive and Capital Circle or the intersection?
That, I don't believe, and I'll look to the consultants here in terms of, or the developer, if their assessment went that far, but I don't believe that that is within the proximity of assesses from a concurrency standpoint.
But as, from a planning department, that's a huge bottleneck of traffic, a huge concern that's already at capacity. How do we get people, as the east expands, how are we going to get them inside Capital Circle when they're going to work, they're going to jobs? And this is, you know, in the small vicinity, I think it's around 2,000 trips per day in that area, but do we, we haven't made any assumptions of how much of that traffic's in that intersection?
Not for, no, not for that specific intersection.
It would probably be important as we plan future, future road projects, capacity road projects, to know, we have these bottlenecks like Thomasville Road, this intersection here that we all know are at capacity, and it seems like our road designs and our traffic projects aren't always addressing them. On the urban forest requirement, can you speak to just how that's laid out?
Yeah, so the banking system for how we do that?
Yes, sir.
So that would be, what we typically have in one-off developments around town would be setting aside 10% of your site as urban forest, which means if it's wooded, then you're leaving it undisturbed. If it's not, we have a reforestation requirement, and that goes into a conservation easement. And so what you might see is basically scattered little pockets of wooded areas that may be very small square footage throughout town. When you get to master plan like this, being able to bank it in that way says, all right, so developments will be able to grow more efficiently, and they may not have their urban forest onsite. Doesn't mean they don't have onsite landscaping requirements and things of that nature, but instead it says, all of the scattered pieces of urban forest that would be spread throughout this are instead going to be one unified, large, undisturbed forested area.
Okay. And I think there's pros and cons to that method. You know, for wildlife, that's probably a big pro, but I think when we see it all concentrated in one area, and we see massive clear cuttings in other areas, we're probably going to face a lot of criticism from the public and what they've seen at Canopy and developments like that. Lastly, I wanted to touch on the utilities portion, Mr. Manager. Do we know that what our liability will be or what the cost will be when we do the underground utilities and the underground electric for this development?
Well, the cost will be the burden of the developer who installed the infrastructure, correct?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the way these work, where there'll be a development agreement, the developer will actually install the, in particular, the water and the sewer, stormwater conveyance, they'll install, they'll complete it to our standards, and then it will become the property of the city ultimately. As it relates to electric, they'll put in the underground conduit and those things necessary, transformers and things needed when homes and businesses get built will be put in at the time of construction. So the developer bears the burden of the infrastructure.
So what we're providing is just up to the property line? I'm looking at two point two under utilities on page thirteen.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what you're looking at, but the approach is the developer actually builds, builds the infrastructure to our standards. That includes underground pipes and sidewalks. They build it, we inspect it, ultimately, when it's completed, they give it to us. So we don't pay for it, we don't build it, they have to build it in our direction. That's all prescribed in a development agreement that will precede the development. It's not at this stage, of course, of the permitting and approval, but it'll happen as homes and businesses are ready to develop. There's been a lot of discussion about that, that we build infrastructure for developers. In fact, we don't. We don't build the roads, we don't build the sidewalks, we don't build the underground infrastructure. They do. They build it to our standards because once complete, and once you have, you know, population, we take it, we own it, we maintain it in the future, and the maintenance of all that's paid for by the fees and taxes that are derived from the services that we get.
Okay, and so, yeah, just for clarity on that, so when it says the city agrees to provide the project with underground electricity, natural gas, potable water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste services, and sufficient capacity to serve the project, that's up to the property line, that's not throughout the development?
Mr. Mayor, what that's referring to is clearly we have to agree to provide the service, not to be confused with who builds it and develops it. So if the city, we could say, potentially, this was a concern for developments like Amazon, we don't have the capacity to serve you, we don't have the ability to serve you, and so that's not to be confused with the development of the lines and the roads and the sidewalks and these kind of things. There's an agreement up front, especially spelled out in development agreements, that will build the utilities underground, while the developer's putting those pipes underground. In fact, all the new subdivisions we've built in the last forty years have been underground, that's a common discussion, and so that's confirming that we have the ability to provide the service, we have the ability to provide the water and sewer, and that we commit to do it. In this case, and solid waste would only be provided if it's inside the city's limits. So these are, these are confirmations of things that we would do, and that's the point of that.
Okay, one more question back on transportation. With, what's the total trips per, I know there's some allowances for if certain densities or certain parts of the site change, but maximum trips per day with the one ninety-nine, is that a hard stop at the traffic load that can be added?
One ninety-nine.
At the external PM peak hour trips?
So that would be essentially the maximum that they, that would be allotted, and that's, it's also broken out in phasing of, so that would assume the Spine Road is completed at that point, and that'd be the maximum trips allotted to where the roadway construction at that point would not be exceeding our level, our level of service standards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John Reddick, once again, you have proven why you are the right man for the right job, and thank you for representing the City of Tallahassee to make sure that we do it right. There is a motion on the table made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes, three to two with Commissioner Matlow and Porter in dissent. Do we have any other items to come before us at the public hearing?
There are no more public hearing items.
Excellent. Well, we're going to take one more tour around the chambers for unagended speakers, to see if we have anyone that was not here earlier, make sure they have the opportunity to speak. These are individuals who have not had an opportunity to speak. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment?
Mayor, we do, we have two. One who spoke on an agended item earlier, but not on unagended.
Okay.
That is Delilah Pierre, and the second would be Bobby Nahum. I'm not seeing Delilah Pierre, Bobby Nahum.
I'm sorry, before we begin public, come on, Bobby, come on up real quick. Madam Attorney, you are absolutely correct, you want to make sure on the record, the three-two vote, by the way, for clarification, the motion was just simply to move forward with the, for the next public hearing, okay, to schedule the second public hearing. All right, we're all in agreement.
Thank you.
Sorry about any confusion I might have provided. Yes, sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, it's Bobby Nahum, East Call Street. So I'm here to talk tonight about the issue with the fraternity house at five twenty-four East College Avenue. First, I want to thank you all for your attention to the matter. For now, it's a lot calmer in the neighborhood, so I appreciate you guys helping out with that. So we have two fronts we're really kind of fighting on this matter. The first one is the issue of trying to prevent the fraternity from operating as a fraternity in a residential neighborhood, that's one. The other issue that we have is trying to change the zoning in the neighborhood so that this doesn't happen again. So basically, and I won't get into the details of what we want to propose, but essentially, what we want to do is restrict the ability of fraternities to be able to operate in the downtown area east of Bruno downtown. So east of Bruno, west of Magnolia, south of Tennessee, north of Gaines, we want a complete ban of any fraternal organizations in that area. They should be really restricted to an area closer to campus, that's what we believe. So me and others in the neighborhood will be reaching out to you all in the coming days and weeks about trying to set up individual meetings to discuss proposed zoning changes. I know that it can be kind of complicated and bureaucratic, so what we really are asking for y'all's help with is kind of fast-tracking this process so that we don't have another fraternity move into the neighborhood downtown. There's big buildings that come up for sale downtown periodically, and we just want to make sure that another fraternity doesn't snatch one of those up and try to start operating downtown. So that's kind of what we need y'all's help with, so we'll be in touch with y'all about that. Tallahassee has had, done a tremendous job over the last fifteen years of improving the downtown area. Somebody that's lived in the downtown area my whole life, I can tell you that, you know, when I was young, back in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands, there was a lot of families in that area, then all the families kind of moved out, and then recently, within the last few years, you've seen a lot of families come back to the downtown area, which is important, I think, for attaining that eighteen-hour downtown, which Tallahassee's been striving for for so long. If we allow fraternities into this area, it's really going to set us back, and it's going to, really, it's going to cause property values to go downtown, to go down, nobody's going to want to buy houses in the area.
You have about fifteen seconds.
We're going to lose ground, so I'm asking for y'all's help with this matter so that the downtown can continue to be headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Just so that you know, we are, Mr. Nahum, we are a couple of steps ahead of you already. I'm going to ask the city manager to provide comment on a proposed text amendment moving forward. You are right, we have university transition, which is the appropriate places for student housing, fraternities, or whatnot, not in the neighborhoods. So, Mr. Manager, would you like to provide comment? Dr. Jumaville?
I'm going to ask Karen to come forward, but Mayor, I think this is a good opportunity to talk about what your options are as a commission, and we talk about changing the zoning, I think there's a nuance to that. What we know, I think we talked about it in the last commission meeting, is that one of the allowed uses in this particular zoned area, which is CU forty-five, if I recall correctly, includes fraternal organizations. If you wanted to simply remove that use and continue forward with all the other allowable uses, which I would suspect you would want to, that would be a text amendment. It is a process, it takes numerous steps. I think it would be helpful if Karen can share with you what those steps are, and then we certainly can take your direction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. That's something that we certainly could bring back for consideration by the commission, a simple text amendment to either remove the use or limit the location of the use within that zoning district. It would take an initiation by either the City Commission or the Planning Commission, and then it would go to Planning Commission for a consistency review with the comp plan, and then it would come back to the City Commission for public hearing.
Excellent, so at the end of the day, you're looking for direction from the City Commission?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would make the motion to bring back.
Second.
An item, okay. We're.
I hear what you got to say.
Yeah, to bring back a proposed text amendment for consideration, to see if the City of Tallahassee Commission.
We will bring back whatever, we understand what your will is, and we will review the code, and we will bring back.
The appropriate.
Action.
Action, okay. All right. There's a motion on table that I made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, by Commissioner Richardson, I give it to Commissioner Porter, she lives in the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Matlow.
I'm just trying to get clarity on what the will, what the will is interpreted as. Are we talking about removing fraternity housings from CU forty-five completely? Are we talking about putting that in some sort of different category? My concern with, there's a lot of properties that fall in there, and, you know, we could be setting up ourselves to essentially downzoting or have a taking from people who already own property. So, I mean, if we're looking at certain areas, or if we're looking broadly at where we want to have this use allowable, I just don't want us to cause more problems trying to whack one problem. So if all that's understood and what's coming back.
Well, we certainly can bring back an agenda item with options.
Correct.
So for you to make your will known.
Correct. Dr. Jumaville, any other comments on?
No, no, sir.
Mr. Mayor, let me, and we'll bring it back, we'll make sure there's clarity of your action, but I think the fraternity houses, as we know them and understand them, they don't exist in CU forty-five.
Right.
Generally speaking, I don't think there's a lot of risk in that, in that way. We'll make sure it's very clear in terms of the action and what the potential impact is.
And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add, you know, we're talking fraternity houses, but it could be sorority houses. It could be not just downtown, it could be other places, so I don't want us to get into a habit of spot zoning, chasing a problem, and it moves somewhere else, and we haven't thought about that as well, so I think we want to think about that. I know that the problem right now is related to FSU, but we have other colleges that have fraternities and sorority houses, and we want to make sure that whatever we do, that is applicable across the board, and that we're not accused of picking on anyone when we do what we do. I trust that that will all be considered, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there.
Sure. Okay, I made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any other discussion, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those passes unanimously five zero. Mr. Nahum, also, I would encourage you and your neighbors to stay in contact with the Vice President of Student Affairs at Florida State University on this particular issue. I know that they are fully engaged, but it would not hurt to establish a relationship as well. Excellent, okay. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre.
Name and address for the record.
Delilah, President of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, President of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. I am not going to give my address, and I'm also, I already spoke, obviously, about the city budget that y'all voted on and, of course, decided to give the ten percent property increase. I'm sure great things will happen to you, as, you know, that increase does nothing to solve the crime rate in Tallahassee, but I'm actually here to talk about an LGBTQ-plus sanctuary city in Tallahassee. As we all know, because I bring it up literally every time I meet here and talk about this, the City of Tallahassee has taken credit for the LGBTQ-plus conversion therapy ban that was created by the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, that was created by Licky Love and Catherine Lane in conjunction with TCAC members, and yet, the city did nothing at all to actually be involved in that process. At this point, I don't really care as much about that as I care about getting the city to support an actual sanctuary city for queer and trans people in the City of Tallahassee. Being queer and trans in Tallahassee is scary, and people are legitimately and genuinely suffering. I work at a public college in Tallahassee, and I'm afraid that I can't use any other bathroom than the one in my own building, because someone might report me, and then I would be suspended without pay from my job. And I'm afraid of using the men's restroom, because I could be, depending on how I look or how someone deems or determines my gender to be, or if they just think I'm trans enough, beaten, like people in Florida have been, like a trans man was just beaten for using the women's bathroom and thrown out and attacked there. This is both politically and economically bad for the City of Tallahassee. Queer and trans people don't want to come here, they're fleeing, we're becoming a refugee state for queer and trans people. The NAACP has a travel advisory for our state, because it's that dangerous for people to be here. If y'all care about the people of Tallahassee, or even care about your economy, your own personal political interests, we need to fight against this, we need to show resistance, we need an LGBTQ-plus sanctuary city, because if not, if graduate students see this, they're not coming to FSU, let me tell you, they're not coming to any public college in Florida. Black students certainly aren't coming to schools that are purposefully cutting and defunding programs that target race. Any progressive student, and there are a lot of progressive or liberal students, see Florida as a heinous place to go, and I know this from personal experience, being friends with grad students who are talking about how they can't see a single black person show up for any of these programs.
Fifteen seconds.
So if you care about the state of Florida, if you care about fighting for people, make it so that people feel safe here, show some real, serious political resistance to what's happening right now. Dissentists must be defeated, and we can do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker, Mayor.
It's been a great night, seven seventeen, we stand adjourned.